Hello, everybody.
Hi there.
Hey there, how you doing?
Good.
How are you, bud?
I'm good. Hey, Councilmember Love, how you doing?
Great.
Evening all, evening all, evening all.
How about yourself?
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, Travis, how you doing?
It's been a rough one today.
No doubt, no doubt about y'all.
Thank you.
Maya, sister sympathy.
Thank you.
And for Lee Carmen.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, this is Deputy City Clerk Romero. We are now live. Mayor Serta, you may start the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we're ready to begin today's Gardena City Council meeting for July the 26th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Serta.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Love.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we need to go into closed session, hopefully for about 30 minutes. And, but before we do, Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on any closed session items?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to go into closed session. We're going to come back at 7:30 and reopen the meeting. Thank you. If everybody can log off and go to your procedures for a closed session tonight.
Okay, floor of one. Okay. Okay, so we're ready to begin. All right, so we're ready to begin tonight's Gardena City Council meeting for Tuesday, July the 26th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Serta.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Yeah.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Love.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, thank you. Let me just read this disclaimer right quick. In order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus, Governor Newsom has signed AB 361. Please be advised that the council chambers are closed to the public and that some or all of the Gardena City Council members may be attending this meeting telephonically. If you would like to participate in the meeting, you can participate via the following options. The first way is to view the meeting live on Spectrum Channel 22 or online at youtube.com/cityofgardena. The second way to participate is prior to the meeting, you can email the deputy city clerk at publiccomments@cityofgardena.org by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting and write public comments in the subject line. The third way to participate during the meeting is via the Zoom webinar. The telephone number is area code 669-900-9128. And the meeting ID number is 870-34516714. Press the number nine to raise your hand and the number six to unmute when prompted to. If you wish to speak live on a specific agenda item during the meeting, you may use the raise your hand feature during the item you wish to speak on. For non-agenda items, you'll be allowed to speak during org communication and during public hearings, you'll be allowed to speak when I open the public hearing. Members of the public wishing to address the city council will be given three minutes to speak. The City of Gardena would like to thank all of you in advance for helping us and cooperating with these rules here. So tonight, we had a closed session and Madam City Attorney, do we have anything to report from closed session?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, with regards to both items on tonight's closed session agenda, no reportable action was taken by the council tonight and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to begin next with our pledge of allegiance tonight. The pledge of allegiance will be held by Mr. Connor Church from the Boys and Girls Club Summer Camp. So is Connor on? Also tonight, our invocation will be led by Mayor Protem Rotney Tanaka. And Stephanie Clerk, do we have our pledge here with us yet?
Madam Mayor, we are having a little difficulty getting our pledge on. Can you give us just a couple of minutes, please?
Sure, while we're doing that, let's go ahead and begin with invocation tonight and then we'll give them a couple of moments in. So Mayor Protem, if you will.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we come to you tonight and we just ask for continued protection and grace against the COVID virus. We know that it's become more contagious and we're trying to keep it under wraps. But Father, we just pray that you will continue to be the guiding force and that people will continue to use safety measures to protect themselves. By the way, we also pray for our president, who right now is suffering from COVID, and we pray that he will recover. Father, we also continue to pray for the Ukraine. We know that the issues there are serious and we just pray for the people of that country that things will get better and they will survive. Father, we pray for our council. We pray that this council will continue to move forward and continue to serve and make great decisions for our city, our community, and our citizens. And Father, we just pray for patience, we pray for guidance, and we just pray that we will be knowledgeable. And Father, I lastly pray for the City of Huntington Park's city council. They have lost council member Manny Avila. Father, with that, we pray and thank you for your son. Amen.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, it looks like we have Connor here with us. Hi there. So we're ready for you to lead us in tonight's pledge of allegiance. And if you can just stay on right afterwards, so go ahead. We're ready when you are.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Great job. So today, we were led in the pledge of allegiance by Connor Church, and he's from the Boys and Girls Club at 156th Street Elementary. Let's see, what does it say about him? Connor is a leader among his peers as well as visionary for his community. And last week here, Connor here was actually my tour guide when I went to visit the Boys and Girls Club. And he had a lot of great questions for us as far as, you know, what we do as the city council, more specifically, what I do as a mayor. So I see him potentially as a future leader. Also, some of the different things that he's in charge of are his day-to-day activities. He's just helpful all around with all the other young people there. What else? Just kind of looking here through the file that they wrote. He's eager to learn and I was very impressed with him the entire time that I spent as he took us around. So Connor, do you have any questions for anybody here on the council? Since he's such a smart and just on thinker here, anything for us?
Um, no, just thank you. I'm just glad to be here. It's not often.
Okay.
In a council meeting.
Right.
But I like to take this opportunity and thank everybody.
Okay, well, thank you. You did a great job. Let's give him a virtual round of applause. I look forward to when we have our meetings in person again and you'll be able to come back as I promised you. You'll be able to come back and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I want to invite you to come to the front, come sit in my chair and take a picture with the gavel and with the rest of the council, because I think you're doing an amazing job. And I believe you're graduating, right?
Uh, yeah, from fifth to sixth.
Exactly, so a smart young man there. So thank you again. We appreciate you leading us. All right. Thank you again, Connor. Okay, so next up, we have item number 5A is the South Bay Regional Housing Trust presentation. I believe we have Mr. David Leisure tonight, who will be giving us this presentation. Hi there, Mr. Leisure.
Hi, Mayor Serta. How are you?
Great, thank you. So we are ready when you are here and
Okay, let me share my screen real quick. Okay, you guys seen all that? Okay. Thank you. Oops. Thank you guys again for having me. Mayor Serta, Mayor Protem Tanaka, councilmembers Francis Love and Henderson. I'm here on behalf of the South Bay Cities Council of Governments to provide a very brief overview of the work we've been doing on a South Bay Regional Housing Trust. About nine months ago, going on a year, we started exploring what it would be like to create a housing trust in the South Bay. And what it would be used for is to help plan and construct new affordable housing, preserve and rehab existing affordable housing, homeless services, homeless housing services, sorry, and to provide cities an opportunity to help meet RENA requirements. The model that the South Bay is exploring is a joint powers authority model similar to what the San Gabriel Valley has done. It's a voluntary multi-jurisdictional JPA, very similar to the South Bay Cities Cog. And it would provide the members an opportunity to access state and federal earmarks as well as grant opportunities. And one of the things that we know going into this is that no project, the trust would not the trust would not supersede the city in any way. So a project that the trust would be considering would have to be approved by the city first. Just a couple of examples of other housing trusts that are in the state. Orange County, they've got 24 city members. San Gabriel Valley, they have 22. San Mateo County has 20. The Gateway Cities Cog is also exploring a regional housing trust at the moment. And there's also legislation to form a housing trust between the cities of Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena. And so implementation steps. Right now, we're sponsoring legislation, SB 1444, introduced by Senator Allen, which would authorize the formation of the JPA. We've also submitted a request for $3 million this week from a state budget, junior budget bill. We'd previously submitted a request for 50 million, but unfortunately, our legislation got in a little bit too late in the process to where we weren't kind of far enough along to be considered as part of this current budget negotiation. So we're kind of reimagining our request to a $3 million request. And that would really help us start the trust fund with admin costs, JPA documents, that kind of, that first initial step of getting everything set up. Just for some context, San Gabriel Valley requested $20 million and received $20 million in fiscal year 21, 22. And they were expected to request $100 million from the state budget this year. I don't know exactly what they've received yet, but there is substantial funding being allocated to these types of efforts. We're also working with our cities to evaluate potential interest in joining the trust. There's no obligation or commitment at the moment. We're just making our rounds and seeing if cities would be interested if and when this happens. We will also start working on forming the JPA documents, bylaws, other administrative documents so that cities know exactly what would be asked of them, what their roles would be, and kind of the process. And then, once we've gone through that, we will come back to the cities and ask for an official commitment to participate. And you would then formally join the JPA at that point. What I'm here today to ask is that you consider supporting SB 1444, the bill that would form the trust, if you're so inclined to support the South Bay Cities Cog's request for $3 million. And then, if you have any thought at the moment, if your city would consider joining the trust, understanding that we're not obligating you or committing you to anything at the time. And here's some contact information. This effort's been primarily led by Stacy Armato, a council member from Hermosa Beach. She's our legislative committee chair. She would have been here today, but she's got a council meeting of her own, so she asked me to attend on her behalf. And we've got our executive director, Jackie, and my contact info. That's the presentation. I can give you guys a little bit more info on how the trust would be formatted. So the South Bay Cities Cog Board would determine an appropriate number of board members for the housing trust board and would elect those members to the trust. But apart from that, the trust JPA itself is a fully separate entity with its own governing documents and the like. So the Cog Board has a relationship in nominating the members. But beyond that, at this moment, that's where the Cog's commitment stops. The board members would be any city council member or mayor from any of our cities. And also would include two housing or homeless experts, who would essentially be community development directors or those types of positions from staff who have a little bit of more housing experience than elected officials might. And that's about it at the moment. We're looking forward to working with our cities to kind of develop the JPA documents and solicit official participation. But beyond that, we don't have any more information. A lot of questions we get asked are what it might cost to participate and that sort of thing. We don't have those figures developed yet, but that will be developed over the next several months so that when we come back with an official ask to join, we'll have all that information at that point. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Anything you might want me to relay back to councilmember Armato or Jackie.
Councilmember Henderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. David, thank you for that presentation. Do you have any understanding or know of the Orange County cities? Are any of those also involved in the lawsuit against HCB in regards to the RENA numbers and recalculation?
I don't know for sure. I would anticipate that there probably is an overlap there. Current state law doesn't allow for RENA sharing, which is something that other cities have also asked. So for example, if, let's say Gardena was to build a project, and would there be a way for other cities in the area to also kind of get that RENA credit? State law prohibits that at the moment, and just the kind of nature of Sacramento today, I don't anticipate that changing. But the RENA lawsuit and the trust are related, but not necessarily tied to one another in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, could you explain to me in a nutshell, what does this trust do?
Sure.
Part of money that cities can borrow against to go build?
Yes. Yes, yeah, forgive me. I skipped over that kind of important part. So the trusts all kind of get formed to reflect the communities that are part of the trust. And essentially, what we would do is use the state funding to create kind of a revolving loan program where developers or a city, if they wanted to develop their own housing, could apply through like a competitive process for funding to help make the affordable housing units pencil out a little bit better for developers. That's one thing that we've heard from a lot of folks is that when they put pen to paper and look at the money, when you add the affordable units in, the developers, it's hard for them to meet that financial goal that they have. And so this process would essentially be a low-interest or lower-interest loan than they might get from a bank or any other financial institution, usually short-term, like three to five years, and then paid back and then loaned out another time. If we were to receive grant funding from a state grant program, those rules may be a little bit different, where that might not be a lending process. That might be a grant that we would then give to a developer. But those specificities will be developed as we move forward and kind of figure out exactly what programs might be best fit for the South Bay.
So it's a part of money that the city can lend to a developer to create, help them absorb some of the costs of building affordable housing?
Correct. And it would be the trust, not the city lending the money out.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Councilmember Love?
Hi, David.
Hello.
Okay, so just want to make sure I understand. So the trust will be funded by federal and state funds?
That's our goal. The lion's share of the funding that other trusts have received is that type of funding? In, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, can you answer the first question? So my second question is, if this trust is funded by state and federal funds, what is to prevent local municipalities individually to apply for the same funding on their own?
Yeah, a lot of it comes down to kind of the size and power and math sort of thing. That a city might not compete well standing alone in a grant process or through an earmark request. But as a group, part of a trust or that collectively, they might score a little bit better or grab the attention of a legislator more. That's one thing that the San Gabriel Valley has kind of alluded to is that they built a relationship up with their state senator who sponsored the bill through this process. And that kind of has helped them get these budget requests in subsequent years. And so it's that type of relationship that we would want to build. So nothing prohibits a city from trying to do this on their own. A lot of cities, I think, have created housing trust type of entities in their city. But this would kind of build a critical mass.
So how many cities in the South Bay has signed on or considering signing on?
So we've got, we've received support in concept from, I believe, eight of our cities so far. No city, we haven't officially asked any city to join, and no city has officially said they were going to join. Hermosa Beach said they were likely to. But a lot of them have asked us to come back with those kind of admin costs and other things that would be part of that.
And that's eight out of how many cities? Eight out of?
15 cities, and then portions of City of LA and portions of unincorporated LA County.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So David, I have a question. So I know you said you guys don't have an idea yet as far as what like a city's share would be. But I know in some of the other JPAs we're part of, like, we know ahead of time, like, if we have at least eight cities, you know, our fee would be somewhere around $30,000 or something like that. Do you have any type of, like, because that's also a big determining factor?
Right. So if we looked at the San Gabriel Valley Trust as a model, their admin costs are anywhere between $200,000 and $300,000 a year.
Okay.
There's some kind of special skills that staff might need that you don't normally get with regular city staff, like a lone officer type of position. Their trust, I think, is two full-time staffers and a couple part-time staff, admin staff. And then, what the relationship, though, they have is they contract with their Cog to do the administration. And that's something that we could consider in the South Bay, but it's not something that we have to consider. And so the closest that we could say is maybe $200,000-ish. San Gabriel Valley is about twice as big as the South Bay, which may in one way be a hindrance for the South Bay because some of those costs are set costs, like a salary for a lone officer is it going to change if we have 15 cities or 20 cities participating? But the share kind of, we're looking probably at like $200,000 admin costs. The good news is that we've been told that up to 5% of admin costs can be absorbed through each of the grants. And so we have potential opportunities to offset some of those costs that cities might face.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments, anybody?
Well, I think that's why we kind of, with David's presentation, they're doing this to all the city councils that are being invited. So I guess I would propose that we support the three concepts that they're talking about, supporting SB, supporting the legislation, and supporting the actual project.
Madam Mayor, is the council interested in providing staff with the directive? We have a letter that has been provided to us in support of SB 1444. But the council liked to give staff a directive to draft a letter circulated to all council members who would like to sign on to the letter in support of SB 1444.
I think that'd be a great idea. Somebody wants to make the motion?
I'll move that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. You know, I think Councilmember Francis had her hand up. She wants a second on that one. Okay. Or was that a question? Unclick. I can't hear you.
Sorry.
Was that a question, or you want to?
I was trying to get the second.
Okay, I think I saw you.
I'm going to mute myself quicker.
Thank you. We will prepare, staff will prepare the letter, and we will have it circulated to each one of you to ask each one of you who wants to have your signature added to the letter in support of SB 44.
Okay. Quick question, city attorney. Does the entire council have to, do you have to have majority signed, three-fourths, to say we, as a city, accept it? Or are we just individually, as council members, saying we accept it?
You individually would, unless you guys want to take a motion now. I mean, each individually want to vote. I wanted to give you each the option of, you know, having, being able to go back and get more information if you felt you weren't ready to make that decision at this moment.
Okay.
But it's
No, we can leave it like that. I just want a clarification. No, we can leave it like that. Because I think everybody needs a little more time to go through that. Okay. Any other questions anybody has? No? David, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks, David.
Thank you so much.
We have more questions. We know how to get in contact with you, so.
Thanks so much.
See you Thursday.
See you Thursday. Have a great evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we're going to move on to item number 5B. We have a lot of certificates of recognition to be given out to the commissions and boards of all the commissioners and board members for councilmember Cascanian. And so I believe there is 10 of these, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10 of these. So I just want to give our deputy city clerk a heads up. She can go ahead and start adding them to the panel here. And I'm going to, their certificate, each one, it says the same thing, but I'm going to, their positions are different ones here. So I'm going to start with what is first on the list here. The first one is being presented to Sean Dixon. I'm going to read the first one here. This is a certificate of recognition being presented to Sean Dixon. It's an official acknowledgement and genuine appreciation of his five years of exemplary dedicated community leadership and service as a member of the Human Services Commission. So we, the mayor and members of the city council of the City of Gardena, do hereby deem an honor and distinct pleasure to commend you for your efforts that extend our sincere best wishes for good health, happiness, and a well-deserved success in all future endeavors. It's been signed by myself and the entire city council. So this is to Sean Dixon. And Mr. Dixon, would you like to say, there you are. The screens just keep moving here. Mr. Dixon, would you like to say anything? You can go ahead and unmute. You're a panel member now.
Just like to say thank you to the council and the mayor for the recommendation, correction, the recognition. And it was an honor and a pleasure to serve.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that. And the next person we have is Khalid Eaton. And Khalid was a planning commissioner. Just one second here. If you can hear a lot of orders. He too received the same type of city of recognition, I'm sorry, certificate of recognition. I'm not going to read the entire thing, but Khalid Eaton was a planning commissioner for five months. And so Khalid, would you like to say anything? Khalid, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the recommendation and letting me serve as the planning commissioner. And I just enjoyed my time. I enjoyed meeting everybody. And I believe we did a lot of good work in a limited amount of time. So I just wanted to thank everyone.
Okay, thank you. And next, we have Terry Haas, who was a member on the Recreation and Parks Committee. And she was a member for 17 years. Terry, would you like to say anything? Great background.
I would just like, thank you. That's one of our beautiful Gardena sunsets. I just wanted to say thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to serve the city. And I hope I will have the opportunity to serve again in the future. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And next, we have Martha Kirksey. And is she on? Martha here was a member of the Senior Citizens Commission, and she was on that commission for 23 years. And I don't see her on yet. Becky, you'll just let me know if she happens to come on. And if she'd like to say anything, we'll make that available for her. Also, we have we have Dulce Ordiness, who was a Gardena Youth Commissioner. And she was a youth commissioner for four years. And Dulce, I don't see her name on here. And Dulce, I don't see her name on here. Becky, also if she comes on, let me know as well. I'm sticking with the list here. Esther, Esther Trillo. Uh, she was a member of the Gardena Beautification Committee and she was a member for five years. Hi Esther, would you want to say anything?
Um, yes, just to say thank you, it was a pleasure serving on the committee and, um, look forward to future endeavors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Esther. Okay, and then, let's see. Okay, we have, uh, next is, uh, Zerita Hernandez, who was on the Gardena Economic Business Advisory Commission. She was a, a member there for five years. And is she on? Okay, don't see her. And then, uh, we have Robert Kwan.
Yes.
Robert was on, uh, Robert Kwan was a member of the Gardena.
Yeah.
Gardena Economic Business Advisory Commission. He was commissioner for five years. Would you like to say anything?
No, uh, not, not specially. Thank you, mayor.
All right, well, thank you for your time on the commission there. Um, next we have, uh, Timothy McCrone. He was on the Gardena Rent Mediation Board as an owner representative and he was a member for four years. So, uh, Timothy, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, hi Mayor Tasha, members of the, uh, council. It's a pleasure to be on the call. I want to say I really appreciate, I think it's important and something I didn't do early on my career because I was so focused on money and improving my own needs and wants is to give back. And, uh, you know, I think Gardena, I've owned property there for ten plus years. Uh, it's made a lot of progress. It's been a pleasure to be part of the board. Something I'm doing on a greater scale and I have funding by two hedge fund investors is the homeless issue. And I've gotten pushback from the, uh, Venice Beach City Council and I'm working with people downtown. And, uh, I have money to give away and help people. So I'd like to talk to you, Mayor Tash, may we go to lunch?
Absolutely. Definitely. We'll stay in contact.
Yep.
All right. And next we have, uh, Woods Woolwine. And he was a member at large on the Gardena Rent Mediation Board. And he was a member for five years. So Mr. Woolwine, would you like to say anything? I see you there, if you want to unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. There you go.
Fantastic, I spoke last week.
Well, you got the mic again. Would you like to say anything or? Mr. Woolwine?
Any or him?
Okay. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you for, I appreciate the opportunity to serve on the rent mediation board. And it's been a pleasure and hopefully some other time I'll be able to serve again. Thank you very much and I wish you all the best.
Okay, thank you. Um, I know earlier there was a couple of people that we were waiting on, uh, Ms. Martha Kurtzey, Dulce Ordines and Zerita Hernandez. I've just been told that, um, they won't be on this here soon. Um, so I'd like to personally thank all of you guys, uh, for serving on these commissions. You know, it's, I, I appreciate the fact that, and I know council member Cascanian, um, as well as all of our entire, um, city council members here. We appreciate the time and effort that you put on these commissions. You could be doing anything else, but you chose to dedicate your time to the city of Gardena and it meant a lot. And, um, you know, the city's a better place because of all that you guys contributed. So thank you guys very much from this entire city council. We appreciate it and, uh, reach out to us if we have any openings out there. We'd love to, uh, bring you guys back on to some of these commissions. All right? Okay, thank you guys again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have item number five C, which is a certificate of recognition to Ms. Shirley Ann Lewis. Uh, she is one of my commissioners and she is actually, um, she is the member at large for the rent mediation board. And, um, so this, uh, specific city of recognition, I mean, sorry, certificate of recognition has been presented to Shirley Ann Lewis on official acknowledgement and genuine appreciation of over twelve years of exemplary dedicated community leadership and service as a member at large, rent mediation board member. We, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of Gardena, California do hereby deem it a distinct honor and pleasure to commend you for your efforts and to extend sincere best wishes and good health for happiness and a well-deserved success in all future endeavors. And, um, so Ms. Lewis here is actually moving out of Gardena. So we're really sad to lose her as a resident. And, uh, she's been my commissioner for a long time. So just wanted to take a moment just to, uh, thank you for all that you've done and representing me. Um, I started off on the rent mediation board and it is such a great training just for, um, learning about city government, uh, dealing with residents and how things are handled. And, um, so, um, Ms. Lewis, if you would like to say anything, you're more than welcome at this time. I think staff said if we can just give her just a couple of moments here. Okay. Becky, are we ready?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lewis.
I'd like to thank you, Mayor Tasha, because I learned a lot of things too while working with the rent mediation board. And it is true that we have a great team and council members are great too. And, uh, we have the greatest mayor. Anyway, thank you guys, I learned a lot.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna miss you, um, but, uh, congratulations and good luck on, on your future endeavors as, as you're now moving to, was it the East Coast now, right?
Yes, Ohio.
Yes, exactly, so.
Thank you.
All right then, so, um, best wishes to you at this time. So thank you again.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, so next we're moving on to item number seven A, which is the reorganization of city, uh, council. So at this time, I don't know, I know this isn't a, Mr. City Manager, do you want to read this part here? Or, or notes or edit notes? Sir, is that?
One second, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We only do this once a year, so this isn't the norm here. Our reorganization and, uh, assignments and so on.
I'm ready, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so item number, uh, seven A, which is a reorganization of city council members.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item is seven A, is the reorganization of the city council selection of mayor pro temp. What's required tonight is to select a mayor pro temp to serve from July twenty twenty-two to July twenty twenty-three. Uh, mayor pro temp appointments are rotated annually. List of the names of the, uh, city of Gardena council members who have served in the position of mayor pro temp from April nineteen fifty-six to July twenty twenty-two is provided. The council member selected to serve will be seated as mayor pro temp at the August nine, twenty twenty-two city council meeting. A copy of the city council policy number ninety-seven dash thirty, council, uh, sorry, council bench seating is also attached for your information.
Okay. All right, well, first off, um, I'd like to, uh, thank Mayor Pro Tem for his time as, uh, in that, in that position. And is there anything you'd like to say? I mean, I know you're still here, you're not going anywhere, but you're released in this position now, so.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I just, uh, I thank you and the council for your confidence and allowing me to, uh, be your backup. Uh, you know, I know you can't be everywhere and that you trusted me to, uh, take your place and make sure that I represented you and the city well. So I just thank you for that opportunity again and, uh, I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, once again, thank you, you were awesome, really, really great and I, and I so appreciate it. Um, so because I am the one that, um, has to choose who the mayor pro temp is gonna be, in fairness to everybody and making sure everybody has that opportunity to be a mayor pro temp, um, I am going to, um, ask council member Francis, um, if you'll be the mayor pro temp at this time. So, um, that being said, I'm making the motion, I'm taking it that that nod means yes, she'll take it. And, um, what, what, okay, hold on, everybody with the hand moments, I need everybody to speak up or, or when, when I ask. Uh, so, uh, Rodney, you, you throwing your hand?
I'll second.
You'll second, thank you. So at this time, uh, Madam City Clerk, um, I made the motion, uh, to appoint, uh, council member, uh, Francis to the position of, uh, mayor pro temp. And it was seconded by, uh, council member, or I'm sorry, mayor pro temp Tanaka Steele. If you'll call the row, please. Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Yes.
Councilmember Love.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, and then now normally, just, I mean, I know we're all doing this by Zoom, but, um, whenever we get back in the office, they will re-see, you know, in the order that it goes. And you see under, I think it's the, the seating policy, how we go from mayor in the middle and then, uh, I forget, right, uh, left or right, the mayor pro temp. And then it goes in order of seniority all the way until we get to the newest member. So just if you guys want to familiarize yourself with that. Okay, once we get back in person. Next up is item number seven B. Mr. City Manager, you want to go ahead and read that part two?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Uh, agenda item seven B, uh, still under appointments. Is, this is the reorganization of council assignments, delegates and alternates to outside city committees. Um, there is a list of proposed council delegate and alternate assignments to outside city committees is, uh, has been provided to, uh, city council for your consideration. So what's required tonight is to, uh, reorganize your council assignments.
Okay. So before I ask if everybody's happy with their assignments on here, I notice we don't have a listing of what all, uh, uh, council member loves, um, different appointees are gonna be on here. Um, there is one change that I would like to ask is that I have, um, asked, um, council member, uh, Tanaka now, um, to sit on the finance committee with me, uh, for that one. But I know we need to do some swapping around, but she also needs to know what her other list of, um, commissions are. And I don't know if we have that information available now. And, but, but, uh, I'm sorry, it's up underneath, it's up underneath here. The city selection, uh, LAFCO, League of Cities, uh, Southern California Association of Government, uh, South Bay Cities and Government. But, um, that is one change that, um, I have asked already for the finance committee. If, um, council member, uh, Tanaka can, uh, take on that position there.
I accept, I, I accept, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Now what about any of the other, um, committees? Is everybody happy with where they're at? Does anybody want to do any swapping right now? Is anything being, is it too much for anybody or anybody want anything additional added to it besides that?
I'm kind of, I'm kind of tied to my mind because, uh, like I'm second vice in the COG. Uh, I'm just been appointed the committee chair for the board at South Bay Communications. Uh, they're asking me to do some stuff at the league, so I'm gonna stick with mine.
Okay. And I, I'm sorry, I'm still looking at this wrong here. Becky, I hope this doesn't throw you off here. So under council member Love's thing, it doesn't list what her other committees are gonna be. And so she needs to know that as well. Do you have that list or? Just so that she's aware of what she's saying.
Uh, Mayor Serta, I thought it was part of the agenda packet.
It's not in here? And then even under the alternate positions, for some reason, council member Francis, hers are deleted off there as far as what she's the alternate on. And that's, I don't know, is anybody else seeing that in their agenda packet as well?
I am seeing Paulette doesn't have any and I only have the one. And I do see my alternates.
So are you clicking on the council delegate, uh, attachment?
Yes.
Council delegates, alternates attachment?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah, I see, uh, council member, member Love has on alternates, city selection committee, LAFCO, League of Cities, Southern California Association of Governments and South Bay Cities Government as alternate, but she doesn't have it being under delegates. It was Gardena Finance Committee, but you appointed, um, council member Tanaka, so.
But there's still a list of.
The only other, um, position as a delegate was the finance committee. So, uh, it is my understanding that, um, council member Love is, just has those alternate, uh, positions. And that was my understanding from Alex.
So.
Mayor Serta?
Yes.
So, these are, uh, under, under the, the, the alternates, uh, for council member Love, these are just placeholders, um, that were transferred from, uh, former council member, uh, Cascanian. So whatever he had, these are placeholders for council. So she, she didn't have any, um, she didn't get an opportunity to select these, basically what I'm saying. And that's why she doesn't have one for her main duties.
Okay, no, I understand that. So are, am I understanding that council member Cascanian only had one board that he sat on, which is the finance?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. Okay. I understand, well, I think in fairness to me, um, are there any extra commissions that anybody is looking to, to let go of or whatever so that no, we don't all? I mean, so that it's fairly distributed here?
I can give up Inglewood Fire.
Okay. Inglewood Fire and?
Training Facility Authority.
Okay.
Mayor Serta, this is Deputy City Clerk Romero. I've been informed that this was taken to council so they could rearrange if needed. If, and, and this is, um, a message I just received from Alex.
Okay.
In the city manager's office.
Okay. So council member Love, would you like to take that position there of, um, what was it? Inglewood Fire Training Authority Commission?
Sure, not a problem. I, um, I accept that. But I do have a question backing up. Are you saying that I will not be on the finance committee or I will be on the finance committee?
No, you will not. I, I need council member, uh, Tanaka on that one there. I just need somebody with, um, who's got some finance background and has been on there a little bit longer just for that committee there. So that's why I'd like to appoint him on that one.
You said he's been on there a little bit longer?
No, 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 he's been on the council longer and he has finance background. So I'd like to have him on there as my second person. Okay. This is just my recommendation that, um, I'd like to have. But I want to be fair and making sure that, you know, there's still other commissions here if you'd like to sit on any of those.
So out of all of the commissions that are listed, I right now am currently only on the Inglewood Fire Training Commission.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, um, if there are any extra on here that anybody else wants to give up, um.
No, you like to, um, but as, as an alternate, she can still go, go to the meetings.
Right. Alter, yeah, as an alternate.
As an alternate, she could still go and still participate. The only thing she can't vote, she doesn't have a vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
With, with the exception of, um, the finance committee, obviously you can't have three council members there.
Right.
But, uh, as, as her, as the alternate, she can still go to the city collection, selection committee and lead California cities and, uh, SCOG and South Bay City Government. It's just she, she don't, will have a vote.
Correct.
Right. Now, for instance, the ones that pay, for instance, like, uh, I know sanitation.
Vector.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see which ones on here pay. I know they don't pay the alternate if the regular person's there. If the regular person is there, then the alternate doesn't get paid for it. If they're not there, then the alternate does. And, and it's only a couple that pay, I don't. Mm-hmm.
So, um, I, I want to get some clarification on what councilwoman Francis said, that as an alternate to the finance committee, I will still be able to attend the meetings, just won't be able to vote. Or Carmen, you're saying that you can't have three on the, on the committee?
Correct. With regards to the finance committee, you cannot have three council members participate. So you may attend, but you cannot speak because then that would be a Brown Net violation. That is with regards to the finance committee.
Right.
Cause there's our, that's the only committee of all of these that has two council members on it. All the others only have one council member and an alternate. So could you attend those committees where you all are an alternate, um, without a vote? Yes, you may, with the exception of the finance committee.
And so she can attend the finance committee, it's just she won't have a vote and she can't.
She can't speak, and she can't have a vote, correct?
She can still go to the meetings.
Anyone could go to the meetings.
It's open to the public if they want.
They are public meetings.
I didn't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
That's fine.
Okay. And at any time throughout the year, if anybody finds that any of their meetings are too much, or their work schedule has changed, you know, and they want to be off of a board permanently, then, you know, always let us know. Yeah, I'm trying to see if there's any, that I can give up.
I'll be, I'm fine with what I have.
Okay.
We don't have to look, you know?
Okay. All right. Okay.
Madam Mayor, can we get a formal motion so that we have it recorded in the minutes, please?
I, yeah, that's where I was going with next. I'm sorry, I was still looking over mine here. Okay, that being said, can we make a motion to move forward with the new assignments, where we're now be switching the one change here, which will be Councilmember Tanaka will now be on the finance committee, and then Councilmember Love will now be on the Inglewood Fire Training and Facility Authority Commission. So I make the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, a motion was made by myself and seconded by Councilmember Henderson. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Serta?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next up is the consent calendar. Does any member of the council have any questions on any items here on the consent? Okay, which items?
Okay, it's a list.
Go ahead.
Okay, eight D.
Okay.
Eight F. Eight H. Eight J. Eight K. Eight L. And eight M.
Okay, anybody else?
I have one, I have two. Eight L, eight M, and actually, eight E.
Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public that has any questions on any specific, any of these items on consent?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to take a motion to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of item number eight D, eight E, eight F, eight H, eight J, eight K, eight L, and eight M.
Madam Mayor, still move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilmember Frances and a second by Councilmember Love. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay. First question, item number eight D.
Okay, so on eight D, I want to take another look at that, the economic assistance program to the Lady Love Casino, thirty thousand dollars. And I just have a couple of questions about how, how that whole process worked, particularly, gosh, I have my notes here somewhere. But I know in, in one case, it was supposed to end on July twenty twenty-four, as I understand it was supposed to be the end of it, but there's eighteen month extension, because the Lady Love Casino had agreed to build a hotel or a shopping center. And then there's another part in the agreement that says that the agreement is only with the party that, that was originally with, and that it couldn't go to anybody else. You know, and unfortunately, Mr. Flynn is no longer with us. So I'm wondering, how does that impact the agreement? And since we haven't, there's, well, I haven't heard anything about building a hotel or shopping center at all, how does that affect the agreement? Because there's the First Amendment, Second Amendment. Second Amendment is about the hotel and a shopping center. And then the First Amendment had to do with, with the eighteen month extension. So it's supposed to end, I believe it said July twenty twenty-four, and then it gave the eighteen month extension, and that moved it to July twenty, or January twenty twenty-six. So all this happened before we were on, well, at least before I was going through the council and I, so I'm just wondering how all that works. How's it working now?
Okay. Mr. City Manager, can you explain the agreement, the agreement with the hustler?
So again, the, the agreement calls for a, if you will, rebate to the casino, once it hits a certain threshold. I, I don't recall exactly what that threshold is. Every month that they hit that threshold, anything above and beyond that, fifty percent goes to them, and fifty percent we keep. With regard to Mr. Flynn passing away, the agreement is still with the firm, it's not with individuals. So with that, the agreement is still enforced, and it's still, is still valid up until the time of the expiration of the agreement. I don't have the entire agreement in front of me, so I don't know the context of the eighteen month extension. Carmen, would you have, having to have that available?
I don't have it, but I do recall, so the, the agreement extends until January of twenty twenty-six for them to perform. So they still have several years on that, and the city manager is correct in that. Casino LLC is the entity that we entered into the agreement. So, you know, you treat an LLC or corporation, that is the individual, that is the entity that we have an agreement with, not with the individual, Mr. Flynn himself. So they are still a valid entity in operation. And so if they, you know, the terms that they have to comply with are by January of twenty twenty-six. So they still have four years, or three and a half years to, to have that.
And so, and, and with the regard to the hotel or the shopping center?
The entire agreement was extended. So all of the terms were extended until that January twenty twenty-six deadline.
So, okay. It would be over anyway, whether, whether he goes with, builds hotel or the shopping center. So it goes forward anyway, whether or not he keeps up that part of the agreement. Well, the, the company, not Mr. Flynn, because Mr. Flynn's no longer with us.
Right. Think, think of it.
Regardless of whether the, the company builds a hotel or the shopping center, the extension still exists? Or can we say, well, you haven't done this, so we're going to go back to the original expiration date?
We can't, we can't go back. We agreed to move forward, that the expiration date now is January twenty twenty-six. So we can't say that he's in breach of the agreement, or that he has not complied with the terms into the agreement, until that deadline.
Okay, whether he builds a hotel or not?
Well, if he doesn't build, or if he doesn't, you know, meet the terms of, of what the agreement provided, we can't call that into question until January twenty twenty-six. So today, whether he's done it or not, I can't say he has breached, or that he's not in compliance, because the deadline hasn't arrived yet.
Okay, and just one more question, and I'm, what happens once we get past the deadline? And none of the things that the company, I've said Mr. Flynn, because he's on with it, but the company has, City Manager, sorry, explained to me, doesn't agree. What happens then?
There is language in the agreement with calls for the reimbursement back to the city of specific funds, and I, I don't have the specific terms, but there is basically a penalty. If you don't comply, and you don't do this, you have to give us this money, this specific money amount back.
All right. Thank you.
I do have a, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
To the city attorney, Vasquez, so in the event that they don't, they don't comply or come through with their agreement, and they have to refund the city back, is that refund with interest?
I don't have the agreement in front of me, it's not an agendized item. I mean, we literally went from an item that was on the warrants to a complete discussion on the agreement. So we're really getting off, off guard here, guys.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
That was, that was, that was just my.
Okay.
You're muted, Councilwoman Frances.
All right, that, that was it. Those, those are my main questions. I'm just trying to figure out how long it was an extension, and, and, you know, what if, kinds of questions. Thank you, so, thank you.
Okay. Next question was item number eight D. Are you still muted? Councilwoman Frances? You're muted. You're still muted?
That, that, can you hear me now? Okay, that was it.
I'm sorry, eight E, eight E. Was your question eight E?
No.
Councilmember Love, your question eight E? Okay, you're muted still?
Yes, I am trying to pull up my question right now on eight E. On eight E. The investment report, June twenty twenty-two, what are the fees paid to the investment advisor, Chandler Asset Management for twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, besides investment advice?
So the, the investment, the investment fees that we pay to Chandler Asset Management, it's based on a tiered, tiered structure. Let me, if I could just pull up the schedule, I will do that. So, the fee structure is the first twenty-five thousand, sorry, the first twenty-five million in your portfolio is charged at zero point zero zero one zero zero rate. And then the next twenty-five million is that, it's, it's charged at a lower rate, which is zero point zero 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 eight zero. Total, to give you an idea, the total fees per year in eighteen nineteen, the fee was at fifty-eight hundred, nineteen twenty was at sixteen thousand, twenty twenty-one was at sixteen four, and then twenty-one twenty-two is at twenty-four thousand two hundred.
Okay, and do they, for which services do they provide, besides, do they provide any other services besides investments, the investment advice?
They, they provide investment advice, and they, they also provide us with the vehicle for us to be able to invest in the different securities, munis, and whatnot. So they actually enter the transaction on the trade ticket, and gives us a report. As you can see, there's a rather lengthy report that we have. This is what Chandler does, gives us a, an advice. We, you know, we're, we're given an advice, but ultimately, the decisions to place these investments in the, in the pools is ultimately up to us. We don't, we don't get into the granular details, because they, this is what they do, and this is, this is, you know, this is what they do day in and day out. As far as market intricacies, market fluctuations, they do this, and we trust that they, you know, on their expertise. As, as far as the dollar amount, of course, that is up to us to tell them, invest ten million here or there. But on the granular details, we don't typically get involved in that.
Okay. Second question, I have to go back to my notes, like Paulette, Councilwoman Frances says. The, the same annual report, what are the accounting audit fees paid to the PUN Group accountant and advisors for the fiscal year ending in twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-one? Are there other services that PUN provides for the city besides accounting and auditing?
So the PUN Group does not provide us with advice. That would be, that would be against policy, and this would be against impartiality. Their sole purpose is look at our books, look at our internal controls, make sure that there is no improprieties, and there's no illegal things going on. They test our inter, internal controls, cash handling, deposits, expenditures, there's certain threshold that they look at, as far as income and expenditures. And ultimately, they, they go through that in a two-week process, sorry. First, they, they do the internal controls in a one-week process, and, and then they come back later on, and they go through, you know, a major look at our, our books. They go through fieldwork, that's about two weeks, then the issuer reports. That's what you see with the comprehensive annual financial report. Obviously, they have to report to the city council anything that they find that is material as far as any findings. I can tell you that in the many years that we have had them, we've not had any findings. That's a major testament of the work that our staff does, because to be able to not have any findings at year end, it's, it's really a remarkable accomplishments. Because usually, there'll be a, you know, a finding or two, but our, you know, our, our books are so clean, we already know what they're going to ask for. So we make sure the transactions are done on a monthly basis, based on the prescribed processes that the GFOA and other entities that are prescribing these accounting processes.
So this is a firm that we hire to do our audits. Who are we audited? Do we have any outside auditors?
They are the outside auditors.
They are an outside auditor?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, all right. Thanks, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me now? I'm sorry, saying I'm muted. Oh, there we go. Madam City Clerk, there's a speaker?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Mr. Zahi Ahmed.
Yes, hi, good afternoon, City Council, and City Mayor. I, I actually want to talk about eight F. I, I'm not sure if I should wait, or?
You should wait, we'll, we'll get to that in just a second.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
No problem. Okay. Okay, back to this here, item number eight E. Are there any other questions on eight E? Okay, if not, let's go to, what's the question on item number eight F, that, uh, Councilwoman Frances, you have?
Yes, eight F, the homeless coordinator job. And first of all, just, just let me say, I'm happy to hear that we're hiring a homeless coordinator. Glad to hear that, because I, I think our homeless population is growing in City Gardena. I think it just kind of riding around, I counted about thirty-five, forty, but the other, my other question is, along the job description part, there's outreach, will she, well, not she or he, excuse me, but will the coordinator work with our Gardena, you know, we have that GMAT?
GMAT team?
Yes, will, will she work with them? Because, I don't know why I keep saying she. Will the coordinator, excuse me, please forgive me, will the coordinator work with our GMAT team? And also, will the coordinated, coordinated get assigned a staff eventually? And will this help us recute our, recruit some of our major H money, that two hundred thousand? So, all that.
So, to answer your quick question on whether or not this person will be interfacing with GMAT, absolutely. GMAT has been our front, frontline staff with, you know, the folks that have, are experiencing homelessness in their city. So they are the, they're experts in the field as far as our city's concerned. So by all means, yes, that, that, you know, they will be interfacing with GMAT.
Okay, and in terms of growing the staff, well, are there any, probably not there yet, but are there any plans to maybe create an outreach team? Maybe I'm jumping ahead, too far ahead?
Probably a little bit at this time, Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Protem Frances, we, we still have to, we still have to, once we hire the, the individual, obviously, we're going to be new to the, the program. We still have to develop a plan, build, build a program, and, and see if we do need outreach teams, other teams, absolutely, we'll, we'll, we'll have to see that. But at this time, you know, we want to get somebody in here, get the plan going, and then see if we, we have to expand.
Yeah, thank you so much, that's the move in the right direction, so.
So I, I have a question, since you said that. So the money that we're requesting back, which was ours originally, let's just say they give us forty thousand dollars for the coordinator, whatever. So is that how that, that person's salary is going to be based on that? Or, I mean, and then whatever, I mean, if it's more money, then maybe we can get, you know, an additional person for her? Because is that how we're going to have to determine it?
So the program that we, that we're... So, the program that we, that we're, um, uh, gonna be doing, this is, this is above and beyond the, um, the monies that we are paying into, or taxpayer monies that we are paying into, uh, Measure H. This is a, uh, believe this is a different funding source that, um,
Okay.
the county has put on. Obviously, this is evolving, right? Uh, as soon as we find out if there is a need, like, um, the, the mayor Protem has, has mentioned, we, we will obviously have to reevaluate and then go from that. At this point, we want to make sure that our baseline is correct, um, hire one person and see where we are, and then reevaluate, and then continue from there.
Okay, so, there's, it opens another question then for me. So, this is a position we're putting up homeless coordinator. That money that we're getting back, uh, for Measure H, would that be then added in as far as whatever other staff things they need?
So, the pot, the pot of money from Measure H is separate from this.
Okay.
This is a different part of money.
Completely.
What this does is for us to get into the program, uh, get our feet in the program, and then, then it opens doors for us to be able to, to apply for different, um, other programs the county might have. Because you can't very well apply for other funding opportunities and other programs from the county if you don't even have a homeless coordinator, and you can't even say, yes, we're doing X, Y, and Z, and then they're gonna say, okay, so how are you doing that?
So, the homeless unit that we had before, we weren't able to pull from that because that unit was specifically there to deal with, you know, that officer that we had, you know, assigned for homeless unit. We weren't able to, I mean, that was part of our program. When we went out there, so we weren't able to pull from it through the county?
No, this, this, this one is from an innovation grant from the South Bay Cog. So, the cog, the cog gets all of the, the funding for different programs, then, um, they, they give us the funds for, for this particular program only. If, if the, um, let's say, for instance, that we have a, a program that, you know, a housing program or something, something in a, in a grander scale, and that would qualify then for the Measure H, um,
I see.
funding. At this, at this point, you know, we can't even touch Measure H because we don't have anything that, that, that essentially is, uh, working towards that goal. This is the first step, uh, and then we'll see from there.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, Mrs. City Manager, doesn't the, um, Measure H money require us to have a homeless plan in place? Even if we had a coordinator, wouldn't we still need a homeless plan in order to apply and qualify for the money? And with this homeless, uh, coordinator that, um, we're talking about, if this is the same position that I looked at earlier today, it's predicated on grant funding. So, if we hire, are we guaranteed we're gonna get the grant funds to hire this person? And if not, where is those funds coming from? And once the grant funds are expended, then how do we keep this coordinator?
So, this is, this, this, uh, homeless coordinator is actually funded by, uh, like I said, from the, from the cog. The pot of money for this particular one is a hundred and ten thousand, but this also includes, um, the homeless plan. So, it's all encompassing homeless plan and a homeless coordinator. Yeah, we already have the grant funding for that. Going forward, uh, it, it's still, I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure as to how much is the ongoing, uh, funding for the, the homeless coordinator.
Okay.
But at least this, this pays for the, the coordinator and the plan to then be able to say, we have a plan, and then we can go from there. And, and then maybe hopefully Measure H come into play.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Madam City Clerk, I believe, um, Mr. Zahid wanted to say something on this item here?
Yes, he has his hand up.
Okay.
Oh, yes, hi, City Council and City Mayor. So, with regards to the position, uh, minimum qual- qualifications, it's only a bachelor's degree and, and one-year experience. What I would say is, you know, uh, there is something called a licensed baccarat social worker, so it's, the acronyms are L B S W. They need, like, it's, it's many, many hours. I think it's like three hundred seventy hours, um, master's degree. So, they're able to, you know, actually communicate, um, with, you know, people that need, you know, help or social working. Because essentially, it's only not gonna be homeless outreach, it's not gonna be like, oh, here's a piece of paper, fill this out, we're gonna get this approved by the county, and here's your benefits. It has to be actually someone to actually, you know, talk to them, understand psychologically, you know, how they are, where they are, what caused it. It could be multiple reasons, and it could be a combination of, you know, many, many different, um, things that could, you know, cause homelessness. It's not just one root cause, it could be like ten different, you know, following, uh, causes that could potentially be, and, and, and someone only with this state certification. So, essentially, you have to go through the state board, uh, State of California State Board, uh, pass the state board exam. They have to renew their, uh, their, uh, state board certification every three years, um, and then need to do continuing education hours. So, they actually are able to sit down, you know, on the ground, talking to someone that, you know, needs help, assessing their m- mental capacity and addressing it, you know, where it actually benefits the person that's getting this help. So, um, we need, we definitely need this where it's someone that's actually licensed. It's not just some kid off of, you know, college, has a, you know, one-year, uh, experience as a volunteer intern and has a bachelor's degree, and then, you know, because this is a very complex and very, and, you know, important, uh, job, I think. Um, and you actually have to, have to understand what, you know, the person that you're, you know, talking to, um, that's in need, uh, and understanding and how you can address it. And it has to be someone mature, so it can't be just some twenty-five-year-old kid. It has to be someone much, much older that has life experiences, that actually understands where, you know, this is coming from. Uh, next thing I would also recommend is having whoever it is, um, i- i- if you can have this, either, uh, you know, a person with a master's degree with a license, state's license, or even a marriage counsel, marriage, uh, counseling certificate, uh, it's also a state certification. They, they are able to take, you know, understand people's conflicts and address those. Uh, I would strongly recommend the city look into partnering with City of Hawthorne. The city in the past has partnered Hawthorne, paying half of the funds with them for emergency state preparation coordinator, and also equipping, uh, the coordinator with a Axon body camera, um, so that there is actually what happened, um, and, um, so, yes, thank you so much.
Okay. Are there any other, um, um, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Mayor Serta, I just wanted to, to follow up on that. So, we're already doing that with, um, uh, the LA Homeless Services Authority, L A H S A. Uh, so they have all the experts that you can possibly need, uh, masters, doctorate, you name it. Also, um, G-Met's already doing a lot of that stuff, the, the, that was mentioned. So, what we need right now is a coordinator to coordinate this, um, and, you know, the, 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 the job qualification, the minimum job qualification is, is sufficient for this particular function.
Okay.
To interface, hence we interface with, with G-Met, we interface with L A H S A, uh, because that's where the real, um, you know, expertise come when it comes to, um, uh, homelessness.
Okay.
Plus, if you were to hire somebody with that type of expertise that the speaker had said, y- you know, we wouldn't have enough money to do that, and the one-ten would not pay for that.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Okay, um, next up is, uh, the question was item, um, eight H.
Eight H, okay, um, just had, um, I, I understand that we, we moved to the S P C A L A, Animal Control and Sheltering Services as a cost, a cost-saving measure, but just on, on the news, I'm just a little bit concerned. On the news, I heard about some of the Los Angeles shelter, not this particular one, that, that were having problems with, uh, with, uh, taking care of the animals, and they weren't being walked properly, and I just wanted to know, how do we know that, um, these guys are doing a good job in taking care of our, our animals?
The S P C A?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a no-kill shelter, is that, that was the other, uh, shelter, okay.
That's correct. Yeah, we were able to, we're able to, um, visit, we're able to make sure that they're, they are feeding the animals, uh, properly. It is my understanding that the, the treatment of animals, obviously, because it's not a non-kill shelter, that the S P C A L A treats their, the, their guests a little bit better than the county does. Um, aside from the fact that they, they don't kill the animals there. Uh, and we, we can see them, uh, when, you know, when it's brought in there, we can, we can definitely see them. Uh, we're able to be, you know, uh, make an assessment, make sure that, uh, everything is, um, uh, being done, uh, properly, um, and, and the treatment of animals are, are being, uh, kept, kept at a high, um, high level.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, just happened to coincide the news and this, and I think, oh goodness, let's talk about it, thank you so much.
Okay, um, anybody else, any questions on that? Okay, next is eight J.
Okay, eight J, obviously, she filed a claim with, uh, now, is this to apply for funding, is this apply for extra money for, um, our, um, guardian trans, transit?
Eight J is, uh...
Because I, I guess the, the metro is, is over, over all the other smaller cities?
This is just a way for us to, to, to get our funding, um, the local returns, you know, um, yeah, this is, uh, we have to file a claim with them, we say claim, it's, it's just, you know, the terminology used for, for us to get our, our, the funds that are allocated to the city.
Okay, and how much, how much was that, or we're, we're going after?
Uh, seven million.
Seven million?
Correct.
And that's gonna be used to improve our...
Seven million in M T D A and, uh, one point four in S T A.
Okay, uh, certainly, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Glad to hear good news. Okay. It was only, I have, just wondering, you know, about the, about the, the set of claims, I thought, well, like an insurance claim, or how's all that work?
No, that, yeah, that, that's the term they use, actually, they use that claim, file a claim with them in order for us to get our money.
So, seven million, that, that, that should do us good, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions on that? Nope. Okay, next one is eight K.
Okay, same, same question, I'm always concerned, good, uh, federal fiscal year. Now, this, this is an application, a grant application, um, for transportation assistance that we're going after?
Uh, this is for the bus purch, uh, this is the, the bus funding, uh, from, uh, F D A.
Okay.
So, um, similar concept, uh, this is just for, uh, uh, federal, uh, federal funds, uh, and are first by the buses, which you will see later on, on, you know, on later agenda, but we're buying buses.
All right, all right.
Anybody else having questions on that one?
Do you know how much money, um, we will potentially receive, much to grant for?
Uh, so it's seven, again, another seven million from F D A, uh, for bu- bus replacement. Another eight hundred sixty-nine thousand for a local matching, um...
Okay.
The combined total, about eight million for, for this particular one.
So, about, total about, probably about fifteen million altogether?
Uh, for, for the two items that you referred to, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, um, item number eight L.
Eight L, now, this is Prop C, and I don't, it's, this has been a long time, but I don't quite remember Prop C, but it says transit security funds. Is this provide, you know, you hear all these stories about bad things happening on, on the buses and near buses, is this to provide like, uh, for example, a, a security officer to ride on the bus, or, or how's, how's this working?
So, so this is for our transit, transit security, uh, program. It includes, um, one full-time, uh, G P D transit police officer, uh, security training, and then this, uh, facility security. And I believe also, I think, well, one of the, one of the G Trans, uh, uh, I mean, P D, uh, uh, patrol vehicles is paid from here, but that I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I know for the fact that one, the G P D officers paid through this.
So, just, just for one officer and?
One officer, correct.
Full officer to kind of follow the buses around, is that it?
Uh, mostly, they don't follow the buses, um, G Trans staff have, has staff that, that can typically do that. The, the officer is, uh, uh, mainly responsive, so if there's a call that, you know, there, there's officers that need it, then, um, you know, we radio it in, and then the officer would, would come.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Doing quite well, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I, I spoke just quick. Anybody else have any questions on that one?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, Mrs. City Manager, with the, um, funding from this, uh, Prop C, you said we only have one, uh, G P D officer assigned, is that officer, um, also doing regular P D patrol? And only respond when there's a call, or is that officer specifically assigned to the transit units? And is that one officer enough considering the way, uh, the way we're going with safety and all of the violence that we're starting to experience?
So, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's dedicated for transit. I, I don't think it's, um, I don't think that officer does, um, anything other, in fact, you know, pretty certain that solely assigned to, um, to, uh, to respond on G P D, I'm sorry, Transit Matters, um, uh, when it comes to routes. So, that's, that's their sole assignment is transit routes.
So, is the one officer enough? Um, I'm seeing that, that, that proposed funding is two hundred fifty-nine thousand, almost two hundred sixty thousand dollars. Is that, and I know that funding will be spent on training and other things, but is that one officer? Are we sufficiently staffed for the number of buses that we have running and protecting our operatives and our?
Yeah, yeah, for, uh, well, we've had this for a number of years now, and it's, it's, uh, uh, it is enough for now. Obviously, if, if Mr. Crespo decides to buy, you know, ten more buses and ten more routes, and we would have to, you know, revisit that. But at this point, um, it is enough for now.
Well, you know, you gotta keep an eye on Ernie, because Ernie gonna have a full fleet plus, plus some reserves, so.
Well, you'll see, you'll see the bus purchase in a little, little bit.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have questions on that? Okay, item number eight M.
The last one, again, this is, uh, Prop C, forty percent discretionary funds. I was a little confused because I see Prop C, five percent security, transit, and then discretionary funds, and then there's a forty percent, uh, M O U. I was, I got kind of confused on that, how much is that in this one-time? One-time offering, or? I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, muted, uh, for that, I'm gonna have to ask Mr. Crespo to come in and, uh, kind of kind of explain that, um, how, how does that, uh, deviate from the, the, the normal allocation? So, Ernie, would you mind, uh, explaining that, please?
Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council members, I'm sorry, and, and, and that, could you repeat the question, if that's okay, please? I got cut off a little bit.
Oh, me? Oh, okay, I was, I was just, I guess I saw, um, I see there's a five percent from Prop C for transit security funds, and then five percent M O U. And then I just got, got, uh, a little confused there with the, uh, forty percent discretionary funds, and then Prop C, four percent M O U. The Gardena is a proven agreement with, uh, L A County Metro, Transportation Authority and City Gardena, I was just trying to figure how it all worked.
Sure, no, that's a great, that's a great question, Councilwoman Frances. So, um, uh, we have, as you, as you are aware, we have four, uh, half-cent tax measures. We have A, we have C, and we have M, Measure M, and then Measure R, right? And so, this is, uh, C, you, the earlier item was, uh, C, but it was also carved out specifically for security funds. This one, uh, is really used for our transit services. So, it's, uh, it's, it's voted on, I think in nineteen ninety, it's, you know, voted by the, uh, tax, uh, tax, uh, measure, and so then it's passed through, um, through Metro, then through us.
And by services, you mean, uh, for example, the, um, maybe the, uh, the rise for the senior citizens to, uh, things of that nature, or just, uh, transit services in general?
Yeah, so, all, all these items that you're seeing today were, uh, used to, in the, in the budget that was approved last week, or, or last month, to fund our revenue sources. So, these are all line items that were included in that budget. And when I say to fund service, it's, it's what will fund our bus service that's out there. Our current bus lines, it's not, it is new money, but it's not additional money. We, this, this is the money we use to run the services.
And kind of keep it going?
Yeah, yes.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
No problem.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, that being said, can I take, um, can I get a motion to approve all the excluded, um, percent calendar items?
It's me, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, pardon me.
I'm sorry.
Med has his hand up again.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Oh, yes, hi, uh, good afternoon, City Council, City Mayor. So, I was wondering, uh, for the security funds, um, could some of those funds be used? Because most of the crime, you know, that you hear about in buses, it happens when bus people, you know, when people are waiting for buses. That's when a vast majority of robberies, strong-arm robberies, people with guns, you, you know, it's, that's where it all happens. It doesn't happen on the buses, it's usually when you're waiting on the bus to come in, and they know the bus schedule. and they know the bus schedule, and they will, you know, they'll target you. So I was wondering if there, some of the funds can be allocated, now, there's a, Google, um, ha- has a company, that's one of their companies, that actually has, um, cameras that are actually streamed over the internet. So all you need is an internet box, power, and all you need is power, because you, you'll hook up the power, uh, and you have the camera that's functional. And that way, if a armed robbery, or, you know, something does happen, uh, it's all on video. You can look at the license plates, the make and model of the vehicles, but that's the hardest part, um, of determining what the vehicle was, uh, you know, or what the vehicle is, who the suspects are. Essentially, it's usually repeat offenders. It's probably the same person that's, you know, robbed twenty-five people in the city, um, and it's usually the same person. So I, I would say, you know, if we can use some of those funds, uh, on technology, uh, on cameras, uh, we would be much, much safer, i- if that could potentially be incorporated at each of our bus stops in our city, and bus stops that we serve, you know, essentially, City of Gardena serves, um, neighboring cities. So if we can do that, yeah, thank you so much. And the cost is really cheap, the, the total cost would, well, maybe about five hundred dollars a year, so, per camera, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, that being said, can I get a motion to approve the excluded consent calendar items?
No, no.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, a motion was made by Mayor Pro Tim Francis, and a second by Councilmember Love. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francis?
I, uh, yes.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay, next up is, um, item number ten A, which is, uh, Planning and Environmental Quality Commission Action Sheet. Uh, we have one item on here, which was the, uh, July nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two meeting. It's for a conditional use permit, uh, five dash twenty twenty-two. And this here is a planning commission considered request for a conditional use permit to allow the on-sale site and consumption of beer and wine in the new karaoke bar, located in the, in the, uh, C two and the P zone, with a mixed use overlay, and, and a direction to staff to follow notice of exemption, um, as an existing, uh, facilities project. So, um, this here item was, uh, approved, and at this time, does any member of the council wish to call for review? No? Okay, then we'll go ahead and receive and file. Uh, next up is Oral Communications. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Next up is item number eleven A, which is, um, the approval of the blanket purchase order for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Mr. City Manager, do you want to start off, uh, introducing that, or?
Yes, um, Mayor Serta, members of City Council, Agenda item eleven A is the approval of blanket purchase orders fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the blanket, uh, purchase order, or PO, authorizes the city to buy goods or services with the predetermined terms or conditions. And since these vendors either have individual contracts, or piggybacking on state contracts, or provide vital services which the city is mandated to use, it is only necessary for the requisitioner to request one purchase order for the estimated amount of the expenditure for the fiscal year. The blanket, uh, PO is limited by a dollar amount, as approved by the City Council, and the purchasing officer can issue releases for goods or services until the pre-established dollar amount is reached. For the city's purchasing policy, section three B, the purchase of goods or services in excess of thirty thousand must be authorized by the City Council. Therefore, as the estimated budget expenditure amount exceeds thirty thousand, it is requested that the City Council approve the following, uh, blanket purchase orders for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. For the general fund, uh, it's one million eight hundred eighty-three thousand six thirty-seven, Gtrans, Gtrans at one million four hundred nine thousand two twenty-nine, and all the other funds, uh, combined would be six hundred and thirty-seven thousand six twenty-two, with the total budgeted expenditures of three, uh, three million nine hundred thirty thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars. What is required is to approve, uh, approve the blanket purchase orders.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any questions or comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, um, can you tell me, um, when this is done, when there's a blanket purchase order done, uh, in the past, has there been times where, um, the amount has been insufficient and needed to come back for increase? In those, um, requests?
Yes, um, when that happens, if it exceeds the prescribed amount that, that you're approving tonight, or will approve tonight, uh, we will come back to the City Council and do a, um, another, uh, approval for, uh, the amount in excess of what is approved tonight.
So you're saying that the, uh, financial impact costs that you have listed here, as long as they, um, don't go over those costs, if the, if it is, if it does exceed the cost, and it's, it exceeds the thirty thousand dollars, then you guys have to come back to the council for approval?
That's correct.
Are there any times where the amount estimated is not reached, and there, where they're underbid, and there's excess money?
So for the most parts, uh, the, all of the items that you see on the table, uh, that we, um, included, these are, uh, dollar, dollar amounts based on historical data that we've expended in the past. Um, so for instance, if you, you know, the, the whole purpose of the, the, the PO, the BPO, is to, so you wouldn't have to keep on coming back to City Council for every single thing. For instance, if we have a BPO for Home Depot, for supplies, for nails, and such, if we do exceed that, then we'd have to come back to, to the body and, and ask for, uh, uh, for that. It's rare that, that we see that, most of the time, if, if it's some, some, uh, you know, emergency that we have to do, uh, you know, fencing and whatnot, then, you know, obviously, we're gonna have to do that right away, and then we'll do a, uh, you know, we'll come back to City Council and explain why we went over. Uh, so for instance, an emergency would be, uh, you know, understandable use of, of, of increasing or going above and beyond the, the, the BPO.
But what happens, and has there been, uh, times when there, I mean, because I know these are estimated figures, has there been times where the estimate was lower, um, the actual cost was lower than the estimate? And in those cases, do you guys redirect that money, or it goes back into the pot, or what happens in those cases?
So we don't mix funding, we don't mix funds, so let's say, for instance, a line item for public works for sandbags, for instance, that there's, there's no, uh, you know, no need for excess of sandbags, or we went o, we went under, um, the budget, then it just goes back to the department's, um, savings, and it's recorded as savings for that particular year. So you'll see, um, when we went, uh, we reported, um, you know, the, the, the financial, uh, financials the, the last time, you'll see that, you know, we, we've said that, uh, these departments went under budget, and that's what it means, we just don't spend, um, to the budget, and then just, it just gets recorded as a savings.
Okay, and has that, does it happen often?
Um, no, it, 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 most of the time, it's, it's either you, you spend it all, because they, they are programs, most time they spend it all, or they, you know, they, they go above, uh, because prices increase, uh, throughout the year, and so most, most time it goes up.
Okay. And has the city, or is the city considering writing ordinance for, uh, local preference when it comes to spending the funding?
Can you explain what that local preferences, as far as local, I mean, buying locally?
Right, purchasing locally, the same way we have, uh, um, preference for a local hire, we try to have the local, you know, purpose for local hire. I think, um, considering we do have a lot of manufacturing and other, um, businesses in the city, that we should consider, if we don't already have, we should consider, um, doing an ordinance so that these funding, these, these funds can be spent locally before we go and spend it somewhere else, whenever the, the cost will allow.
So to answer your question, these, these are, you know, pretty high dollar amounts, hundred forty thousand, hundred thousand. So when, when we get into, um, contractors, suppliers, and whatnot, and to this, you know, to this level, uh, we go through an RFP process. So the RFP process, we specify that we would like them, we would like, uh, local, you know, the funds to be spent locally, right? Um, so, but to that extent, if, if you go to an RFP, we, we, we want them to, to spend it here in Gardena, and, and hire locally, and spend locally.
Because I'm, I'm using your example as, with Home Depot, and I know Ace Hardware don't compare to A, uh, Home Depot, but we do have an Ace Hardware inside of our city limits, where Home Depot is not, and, you know, I'm, you know, you know, I'm pro-small business, so.
Absolutely, yeah, no.
If you come up, I'm gonna try to push for our small businesses in the city to get that business.
Sure, I mean, to, to, to the best, that, we always think locally, we have, you know, we, we, you know, we say that all the time, think locally, think Gardena first, um, so we have to lead by example as the city. When we buy things, supplies, whatnot, we do look locally first. Unfortunately, you can't really, you know, rely on that all the time, you'd have to go outside sometimes, um, and that's what, you know, that's just a reality, but, um, our preference really is to, to hire and, not hire, but, uh, to, to, for, for the purposes of the BPOs, we want to spend it locally.
And Councilmember Love to add to that, our, our code, our municipal code already does contain language with regards to the preference of where feasible, uh, purchasing local, and, you know, with, uh, purchasing local and also hiring local, when it's the city's option, so our code does contain that.
Thank you.
Does any other member have, uh, any questions at this time? Go ahead, Councilwoman Francis.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, I, I have a couple of questions. So by approving these blanket purchases that are over our thirty thousand dollar limit, are we changing the, the amount of, um, are, are we changing that, that standard thirty thousand dollars?
No.
Or is it the same?
No, we're following the thirty thousand, because anything under thirty thousand, I can, I can authorize. So, um, because it's exceeding thirty thousand, the body, the City Council body now has to approve all of these purchases. And this is not, it's not deviating anywhere from the budget that you approved. So when you approve, uh, for instance, uh, I'm gonna give an example, for auditing services, Poon Group, that's already been approved in the, in the budget process. We're just saying, here are the, the, the over thirty thousand that we're gonna be spending for the year, we'd like you guys, City Council, to approve this, so we don't have to keep on coming back and individually go back to the City Council, each and every one of these. So, the thirty thousand is, is the thirty thousand.
So the thirty thousand stays, but this is just, uh, above, beyond, this is like a special type of, uh, approval that, that you're requesting, that...
So, to, to give you, uh, to put it in the context, if we didn't do the, 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 this agenda item, um, I don't know how many, how many items are on here, but we would have to go back to you, the City Council, for each and every one of these. You would have to see them, you have to vote for each and every one of these, which, you know, for the most part, we, we buy these annually, we're, uh, adhering to the annual budget. Uh, all we're saying is that we'd like you to see, see and, and approve all of these purchases that we're doing for the entire year.
Okay. So, um, where, where are the controls? Where, where is the control to keep, um, say, for example, I, I'm, I'm not quite sure, not, not that it would happen, but, but how, where the checks and balances, it's controls to make sure that each group doesn't, uh, exceed their budget, or run up, run their budget up, all, since there, there's like blanket purchase, like we'll just go ahead and, and buy, you know, spiced paper, thirty thousand dollars worth of paper, and just warehouse it. Where, how do, what's the prevent, uh, where the controls, and, and internal controls, to make sure that people are, 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 not that our staff would, we have pretty good staff, but that they would, um, you know, kind of step, keep in, in step without, uh, going over or spending too much too fast, I'm not, I don't understand.
So the, the first line, the first level of internal controls for, for exceeding, uh, any purchase would be under a contract. So we have a, I'm gonna give you an example, like, we have a contract for, uh, Phoenix Group, we have a contract for Poon Group, we have a contract for, uh, Jones and Mayer. So that all those, uh, individual contracts are in place, and we can't deviate from that, we can't exceed that. Otherwise, we'd have to go back to the City Council and ask for, uh, you know, additional authorization to spend above and beyond that. Uh, for anything like paper, et cetera, et cetera, uh, our staff is, is obviously monitoring that, and it's in their budget, when it says paper for, for instance, recreation, they can't go above and beyond, let's say, five thousand. That, that, that's where the internal controls of the budget process, the auditing standards, those are gonna be in, still in place. All we're doing is, we're asking the City Council to approve all of these items in lieu of going to you individually, because it's, it is, you know, they have purchase orders, and it's a bulk, so.
So what, what, uh, say for example, Mariposa Landscape, they're, um, that's a four-year contract, and they're, I, I guess, a year to year, so how do we? I, I guess, guess my, my big concern is control, and how do we, how do I, as a council member, kind of keep track of all of this, and, and where, where all the money is going? Or do I need to?
So the, the contract that, that, that you have approved for, for, uh...
That was just an example.
For Mariposa, I mean, I, I believe, you know, it's coming back when, when we select for, uh, tree trimming, for instance. So Mariposa, let's say Mariposa wins the, the tree trimming contract, still gonna go back to the City Council, for that contract. So the contract in itself is, is, you know, it's still in the, under the purview, uh, and approval of City Council. All we're saying is, we're, we're now spending the money that you've approved in the budget process through these vendors.
I guess my concern, if you start by talking about blanket purchase, and these numbers are so big, it's kind of okay, when it's like thirty thousand, forty thousand, fifty thousand, and when you get to be a hundred thousand, then I'm looking at this bottom line, grand total budget and funds, uh, is that three million dollars?
Correct.
So we're, we're going to be approving a, um, blanket purchase for three million dollars?
You've actually already approved that in the budget process. We're just identifying the people that we were, were spending it on. So in the budget process, all this is approved already. The all sixty million dollars in general fund, uh, two hundred million in, uh, all other funds, those are all, those were approved, um, the, 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 the budget process. All this is doing is signing POs, you know, we're identifying the, the vendors that we're spending on, and the vendors have to have a contract with us.
Will we get some type of report, a monthly report, or is that, does that make sense? That we can see how things are going, or do we need it?
Uh, you will get an annual report that shows you if we went over budget or not.
It's too late then.
Then, then I'd have to answer that question, why, but, no, I mean, in, in all seriousness, I mean, this is, um, you, you know, this goes on every year, um, we do report it at the end of the year. If we go over budget, um, you know, the City Council has to know about that.
Yeah, I remember from last time, it, it's just the numbers, there, there was, uh, uh, rescue me if I'm wrong, but there wasn't anything over a hundred thousand, nothing, uh, four hundred thousand, there was, there was none of these, uh, the numbers weren't so large, that, I think that's, I think that's my, my great concern. Pinnacle Petroleum, one million dollars. So, uh, all right, thank you, that, that was just my question, I'm, I'm just kind of, I guess, and the numbers get too big, and I'm talking about blanket, blank checks.
Oh, no, this is not a blank check, no.
Okay.
So this is City...
I, I am, I am forgetting that, uh, we have a quarterly finance committee meeting, and that's all reported in the finance committee, it's not how, how we're doing, what are we spending on, how much we spent it on, um, that kind of, you know, that kind of reporting. So, you know, you do, you do get a quarterly report.
Was there another question?
I, is, I do have a question, um, Mr. City Manager, so, but you kind of answered it, that on that quarterly report, we can keep an eye, just make sure that we're staying within the spending budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's all I had, thank you.
Okay. Um, Madam City Clerk, we have somebody from the public?
Yes, we do, Mr. Ahmed.
Go ahead.
Oh, yes, hi, uh, good afternoon, City Council, I'm City Mayor. So, I mean, a, a, a thing, I, I, I would not support this initiative. Um, if you think about it, patrol and city fleet, it's just leasing cars for a hundred forty thousand four oh five. So essentially, we're, you know, brand-new cars, leasing it. Why not just, you know, use the old, you know, older vehicles, or even buying used cars from Hertz? I mean, they're good cars, Hertz, and they're still warranted, or even go to the Hyundai dealership, buy a brand-new Hyundai, a hundred thousand mile wa- warranty, ten years, only nineteen thousand dollars, and these Hyundais are equipped with, you know, really well, so why not buying them rather than leasing? If you're leasing them, then you're essentially paying a premium, and also, uh, you're, you're paying more in, in insurance. So, um, that's the thing. Also, if you look at the, uh, what, the Data Gear video policing camera maintenance, the cameras barely work half the time, so crime occurs, oh, camera didn't catch anything, camera turned off. We're paying them a hundred thousand dollars for not even, you know, actually replacing the cameras. Um, or, for example, he... Um, or for example, here, the, the Mariposa Landscaping, um, I, you know, I always recommend driving to City of Irvine, uh, they have a landscaping company. I watched them actually going into the bushes, cleaning the, but, you know, removing plants, adding new plants. Um, I, I would recommend even, you know, looking, you know, and watching these expensive, because some of these expenses are, I would not recommend. Like, for example, they're, they'll just be like, oh, we need more money and it's just going to, you know, it's just like a blank check, especially the leasing of vehicles. Just go to Hyundai and, you know, they have really good vehicles, nineteen thousand dollars. You could probably buy, for a hundred forty thousand, you could easily buy seven brand new vehicles, Hyundai's with a hundred thousand mile warranty, bumper to bumper by Hyundai, um, and they're good cars. So um, I, I would recommend excluding some items from here um, for the, you know, not, not everything should be a blank check. So, okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Um, Mr. City Manager, in the future, maybe this term should be termed something else and not blank check. I mean, I think it probably, maybe just that terminology is maybe throwing everybody off. Or is there a better name for it?
No, this is an industry standard, it's not even a blank check, it's a blanket purchase order, meaning it's, it, you're, you're covering what needs to be covered for the entire year.
But if that's what the industry standard name is, then I accept it, okay.
Yeah, it's, even the, the acronym, the, the BPO is this industry standard, if you talk like that in a purchasing convention, they know exactly what you're talking about, BPO, blanket purchase.
And there's something I, I, just the speaker had said and it just kind of bothered me a little bit. Um, claims that um, through our, our video camera programming, that, you know, half the time our videos don't work. I've never heard that in any situation where, for instance, if this is something we're looking at as far as um, our video cameras here, uh, the maintenance of that, our video policing cameras, and saying that, you know, half the time they don't work, I don't even know where that's coming from. So when a statement like that is made at a City Council meeting and it's something that viewers are listening to, I, I think that's inaccurate information that's being put out there. I'm not going to put the chief on the spot right now, but I mean, there's a reason why we choose certain vehicles that we choose. I mean, just sit here and pick and say, oh, I don't know, Toyota or Hyundai or whatever. I mean, there's a reason why certain vehicles are picked through the police department um, as far as how we're getting the best mileage or whatever deals we work out. So just picking something just because somebody thinks, oh, it's cheaper. There's reasons why we go with different companies we go with and we're not just picking the highest company out there. So um, I just want to make sure that people who are listening to this, they're getting accurate information and not just something somebody says and it may kind of sound good, but it's not necessarily the best.
Mayor, Mayor Serta, I, you know, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you and I, you know, you know, there's, our cameras are not working half the time and, you know, our police officers, you know, they, they have these, you know, Axon video cameras uh, on all the time. You know, I, I don't know of any instances where, you know, it might, you know, that it doesn't work. That the reason why the maintenance is there is for the very reason that we, you know, they have to work.
Right.
So I, i- if, if they are not working, I, I, I'd be aware of that, but.
Right, exactly.
I think he also said they turn them off.
They can't do that. In fact, my understanding is the officer will get in trouble if they turn it off. So I, again, I want to make sure that our listeners are hearing accurate information and when these statements are made, uh, sometimes if we don't comment behind it, but I think it's important to comment on, on that. So um, yeah, that, that's not accurate. Okay, are there any other questions or comments at this time? Councilmember Francis?
Just one more, just, just so I'm clear. So um, essentially, now all these items have already been voted on in the budget. So we've already approved these amount, this amount of money for each of these items. This, these are expenditures, we said it's okay. So all we're doing is, is saying it's okay to write the checks without an extra approval from us? Is, is that pretty much, is that pretty much it?
All, all we're doing is combining everything, everything in one, one agenda. Otherwise, we would have to go back to you for every single one of these purchases, yeah.
But we've already approved it and so we're saying it's, it's okay.
The dollar amount has been approved through the budget process. Um, all we're doing is now we're spending that through the different um, entities that we utilize in order to get the services.
And that's because this is how government works.
Uh, it's a different process from private, private sector, but essentially you, you get to the same, you, same, you know, effect, which is, um, I, I've worked in the private sector, very similar. You know, you go through the budget process and you go through POs, BPOs and then, you know, yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions or comments? No, can I get a motion to approve the blanket uh, purchase orders?
Remove.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Madam City Clerk, a motion was made by Councilmember Henderson and a second by myself. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Serta?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, so next up is item number twelve A, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the City Council, Agenda Item Twelve A is a review of the revised twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine housing element. The city has been working on its twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine housing elements since December of two thousand nineteen, but it entered into a consultant agreement with Veronica Tam and Associates. The housing element is one of the required elements of the general plan. It sets forth goals, policies and programs that addresses the future housing needs for all income levels in the city over an eight-year planning period. January twenty twenty-two, council adopted the housing element. However, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, did not find the housing element to be compliant with state law. As a result, the HCD's review, uh, of the HCD's review, staff has diligently been working with our housing consultant to revise the housing element. The additional changes have been made to comply with HCD's correspondence with regard to new or modified goals, policies and programs. There is no financial impact. What is required tonight is to review and discuss the changes to the adopted housing element for resubmission to HCD.
I believe Amanda has a presentation, please?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Serta and members of the City Council. Uh, my name is Amanda Cunha, sitting here planner here in the Community Development Department. Um, here we, uh, we also have in our office here, uh, Assistant City Attorney Lisa Cranets, our current uh, Community Development Director, Gray Sujuchi, and uh, our Planning Consultant, uh, Greg McLean, who if y'all recall in the beginning of the, this housing element project, um, was the interim director here for community development. So we're going to provide a um, short uh, presentation. Um, as uh, City Manager Osorio stated, we'll be discussing the, the revisions made to the uh, adopted housing elements uh, for, for discussion here at tonight's City Council meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen at this time. And if you can, please let me know if you're able to see it. It's up?
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, so again, yes, tonight we're here to discuss uh, the, the Gardena housing element uh, for the sixth cycle, which is the planning period of twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine. And uh, and um, as you all know, a, a major component of the city's housing element is showing how uh, we need our allocation of the Regional Housing Need Assessment, or RENA. And if you all recall, our, our RENA allocation, uh, which is again broken down by income levels uh, for, for housing unit developments, uh, it, we received a total allocation of five thousand seven hundred and thirty-five uh, new residential uh, units. So the city was tasked with uh, providing a plan on uh, how we would allow for those new developments uh, within our housing element. And so in, within our housing element, uh, and by HCD requirements, we were allowed to uh, identify uh, or be credited um, towards meeting that, our, our allocation. Um, we were able to credit uh, for the number of ADUs that were projected uh, for the eight-year period. Uh, so shown here in the table down in the total for, we were able to uh, get a credit for a hundred and sixty uh, again, for the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-nine period. By sale, we're also allowed to uh, account for the projects that are either in the pipeline, meaning that they have either received um, development, or sorry, entitlements um, and will be developed within the planning period or uh, are pending projects that will soon receive entitlements and still be able to be developed within the planning period. So, so the uh, so in that total, we were able to account for six hundred and eighty-sixteen units. And so with those two credits, uh, we were left with uh, four hun- four thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine uh, remaining uh, allocation within our Regional Housing Need Assessment. So in order to address for those housing developments, we um, we proposed housing overlays over uh, commercial and industrial zoning areas throughout the city, um, which again were broken down in uh, in accordance with the, in, in different uh, income levels. Um, the, the first two, the oh-three and oh-four housing overlays near those uh, densities of our existing residential, medium, high, existing residential zones. And we proposed two new uh, residential overlays with new densities um, that would allow for a higher uh, density uh, housing development projects. And so we identified a total of four hundred and sixty-eight sites and uh, through those sites, um, we were able to allocate for, or identify uh, for a total of six thousand uh, five hundred and eighty-six new dwelling units. So, so as you can see, it's well over um, the, our allocation. Um, but that was done because uh, state does require that we provide for a buffer. Um, they, they recommend a, a buffer to, to identify more sites than what is required. Um, in the case that, you know, those sites that were identified aren't developed to that density that we identified in our housing element. So typically, they require a, a buffer anywhere between fifteen to thirty percent and the city uh, accounted for a twenty-two buffer, twenty-two percent buffer. Uh, so that was a quick overview of our sites inventory and um, yeah, the project in regards to the housing element. And so the, the primary discussion of tonight is um, to discuss those revisions made to the housing element that address the comments from uh, the State's Department. Uh, those included uh, statistical changes. So due to um, elimination of two project sites and that was due to the, the fact that they've um, in the time of reviewing and making the revisions from HCD, those two projects had uh, received entitlements and um, and removals of other sites due to lack of justification within the assessment. Um, so those, the numbers had to be readjusted um, throughout the, throughout the document. So those changes um, were, were made. And the primary focus for tonight's discussion is to ensure that this uh, the City Council is comfortable with the policies and programs that were added uh, within Section Five of the housing element. Uh, and these again were to address the, the concerns from uh, HCD. And so those items, um, the ones that were provided to the City Council and posted on the city's website were highlighted uh, in blue to show what changes were made. Um, but in, in general, they were to show that uh, that the city would be uh, including creative uh, or developing cre- uh, objective housing standards. Um, and as we had brought to you at the last City Council meeting, staff is already in the process of doing that. We received a grant fund um, and have on board a, a consultant who is uh, beginning work on that already. And then uh, the other changes within the, the programs that were made were, were mostly to focus on uh, the areas of North Gardena. And so those included, you know, programs that have uh, you know, to require uh, you know, North Gardena residents on each commission. Uh, so like the planning commission or, you know, our, our GBAK uh, and, and as well as other programs that target housing uh, target housing programs within that area and promoting development and business opportunities. Um, in addition to that, other programs were created to incentivize for more affordable housing. Um, and lastly, a portion of the revisions that were made focused in on the uh, AFFH, that's a uh, affirmative, furthering fair housing. Um, and so that was provided in the matrix and uh, the matrix and that included uh, you know, requiring more fair housing outreach, um, more senior housing outreach, focus on outreach for neighborhood improvements, facilitating uh, ADU development and considering inclusionary housing as well as promoting uh, home ownership opportunities. And so again, what is being asked tonight is that uh, the council take uh, yeah, discuss these proposed uh, additions to the housing element before staff uh, res submits to the State's Department. And the timeline after this, after tonight, uh, what it looks like is that HCD will have a sixty-day review period uh, within that time to review our revisions. Um, if they come back and say that it uh, it is a certified uh, housing element, then at that time, staff will take the amended uh, the amendments to the housing element, first before the planning commission and then uh, eventually to the City Council. So at this time, um, staff is prepared to, to answer any questions um, uh, from the City Council or from the public.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the council have any questions at this time? Okay, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you Amanda for that uh, presentation. Could you give me an example of how we create some incentives for affordability, the City of Gardena specifically?
Yes, Councilmember Henderson, um, some of the things that the city can do for incentives is one, having pre-approved uh, building plans for accessory dwelling units. So people don't have to keep look, going through as long a review process because the plans are already established. Um, incentives could be to reduce or waive fees if um, people agree to keep the units affordable, an affordability covenant for fifty-five years. So there are a number of things, um, maybe if people do affordability covenants, you know, Gardena used to have a twelve hundred square foot second unit ordinance and we reduced it down to a thousand square feet. When, I can't remember, because there've been some, as you know, there've been so many housing laws that have come out since about twenty eighteen. It's hard to keep track of when we've made the changes. But we could do also incentives that if you agree to keep it affordable, you can build a larger unit. So it's, you know, however creative we want to be and we are looking at other cities as well.
All right, so thank you for that one. So, so I got it, because we're all at that, that discussion on Sunday. Uh, so in regards to HCD, because I'm of the mindset that they're incorrect in the numbers that they allotted, especially for our city, although we're on transportation corridors. But we've done all this work and HCD, you know, lawsuit comes back and it's like, well, really, Gardena, you only needed to develop two thousand additional units and everything. Then what happens to all the work that, and time we spent?
So, okay, so a couple of things. First, uh, one thing they said on that program we listened to is like, basically, there would be a proportionate reduction of units. So unless LA County, or, you know, our code got reduced by fifty, more than fifty percent, um, we're never going to get down to two thousand, given that we are, we have that astronomical numbers. Thinking about that after the program, that a proportionate reduction is still going to leave Gardena with thousands of units. The second thing is if they come back and they reduce it, we can go back and pull some of these sites out. We can rezone and, and take the overlays. We can rezone and take the overlays away as long as we leave sufficient sites to whatever a new number is. But I think, you know, a decision in that case, which hasn't even been filed yet, is a long, long way off. So we have to keep working towards the numbers we are stuck with right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And so now my next question is for Mr. Sugiuchi and Mr. McLean in regards to the impact of infrastructure, actually for all of us, the impact of infrastructure with all the additional housing that we need to then incorporate into our community. How do we then address that? Because we can only service the sixty two thousand that we have with police, fire, water, electrical and everything. So now what happens to that? Because that expansion of infrastructure has to come from something, somewhere. And our, our margins are always slim here in the city. What's our plan for that?
I, I'm going to take that one too. So we have started working with our consultant years ago, the city council. In addition to approving the housing element agreement with Veronica Tam, you also improved environmental consultant agreements with de novo, one of our regular E I, environmental consultants. We have been trying to finalize our project description, which is, you can imagine with the number of zones, the number of properties that have to be changed. Greg, Amanda and I have been working probably solid for a couple of weeks on this. I'm making sure it's right. Then it goes to our environmental consultant and we'll get a full environmental impact report relating to the impacts of this. Developers will have to pay for upgrades to infrastructure if it's required for their projects, just like developers do now. If sewers need to be upgraded, then it's on the development. And maybe we can look at development impact fees or other types of programs to help fund that.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, and attorney Vasquez, you can probably correct it, would now be the time to talk about us getting some information on that lawsuit? Or should we wait till later on to kind of get a motion for that?
Wait for later on, Councilman Henderson. I will tell you, I did participate on that event on Sunday as well. I did speak to Attorney Lee and I have been provided with the copy of the closed session memo. It is a conversation for closed session that I plan at the, if I'm given a direction, a directive to put that on closed session, I will do that if that comes up later tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Francis?
Yes, so, so I can understand this. The, the highlighted blue part was the revisions. Is, is that, that correct? Okay, so I have, I'm just very concerned about what's been resubmitted because when I look at the, the, what the HCD is asking for, I don't, I don't see that we really answered their question, you know. I always tell, tell my, my students, you know, first consider your audience and then make sure you answered a question. And I don't see where, I saw you restate with what already exists. We already have commissioners from, from each area. We already have a lot of things that you talked about, they're already in place. So I didn't see, maybe, you know, risking if I'm wrong, but I didn't see where it talks about how, you know, the slight impact on fair housing conditions, when they talk about the overcrowdedness. A lot of the, the type of projects that we're building right now, really, you know, they're high density type of projects in the first place. And given our current economic conditions, there is going to be overcrowding, you know, more than one family in, in a unit. And, and some of that is, is cultural. You know, some of that, you know, we, you know, we live generationally. We have, you know, grandma, auntie and kids all in the same house and it's supposed to be that way. I know one of my neighbors wondered why I was only one living in my house. So, and I'll say, I don't see, I see enough discussion of metrics and milestones and strategies. I saw some strategy and actions, but I didn't see any evaluation issues and metrics of how do we, how do we evaluate what we're doing? Also, we talked about the inventory of land suitable, some of the non vacant sites. We talked about, you talked about brown steels. We don't have a brown steels program anymore. So it was just the land use control. A lot of things that you talked about, it had already been stated in the HCD review, unless I'm wrong, I couldn't see any difference, to tell you the truth. It looked like it was just a restatement of what's already written. And I'm concerned that since we didn't answer their questions, they're not going to approve it. And I think it needs some more work. Not, not necessarily what, what has already been written, but some, some fresh, fresh stuff. Because I, I couldn't, I kept, I read it about four or five times and I just couldn't see it in terms of variety of new housing. I didn't see anything that spoke to that. It talked about dilapidated conditions and all that and Northern Gardena. And I'm sure, you know, they got Google Earth, so they can take a look because when I thought dilapidated, dilapidated conditions and old houses, well, yeah, most of the housing, at least where I lived, it was built back in the fifties and on southern part of Gardena, some of that was built back in the nineties, but now this is twenty twenty two. So that's also old now. So see what I'm saying? You got old and older and old. So, but I just didn't see, I didn't see any, any fresh, I didn't see anything new. I just saw a reset of what we're already doing. And so I have some concerns about, you know, putting in no housing programs. I didn't, I know that with the Manetta Affordable, there's a covenant in there to keep it, to keep it low income for thirty years, something like that. But, you know, back in the day in actual real estate, that was part of the loan agreement because she wanted to make sure that the loan was given was on the, the affordable low income went to owner occupied. And you want to make sure that it remained owner occupied, you know, back in those days, like seven years, ten years. And now, you know, the city has talked about, you know, twenty or thirty years, which is okay. But I didn't see, I saw some of the zoning, I saw, okay, I saw some new zoning going on and some talk about it. But I just didn't see enough and I, I am concerned if, if we submit, resubmit this again, they're going to kick it back. I wouldn't be surprised. I'd be surprised if they pass it. Because I don't think you did an adequate enough job of answering those questions and, and answering all the things that they asked for. So I don't mean to, you know, be very, you know, bad tidying or bad news, but I am very concerned that, that. I don't know if that's a statement or a question, but I guess my question is how did we address the metrics and the milestones? How did we address besides of putting a commissioner from North Gardena on each of the, the, you know, the business community and all that? How do we, how do we address the public services? And I didn't see how we address that. And Councilmember Henderson talked about availability of infrastructure. We, I didn't see any conversation about infrastructure. I hear you telling me, but I just didn't see it. So I, I'm just asking. I'm, I'm just wondering. I don't mean to be harsh, but I'm, I'm just wondering.
Unfortunately, our housing consultant couldn't be here tonight. I have to tell you that HCD, despite there being an October fifteenth, twenty twenty one deadline with an extension, the hundred twenty days after February twelfth, twenty twenty two, out of a hundred and ninety seven jurisdictions, HCD has only approved twenty jurisdictions at this time and only eight within Los Angeles County. Our housing consultant has been doing this for decades. She's been in contact with HCD. She believes that we're very close. We may get some more minor comments because that's just how HCD is going for the six cycle housing element. Certainly if the council has suggestions of what to add, we can add that before we get it sent in. But you get to the point where you simply have to submit something to get more information of what they want. It's, it's been a, it's been a ridiculous process in all honesty of what HCD's turned around and done on this housing element cycle.
I don't, I don't disagree. Just state wants what the state wants. And as I understand it, if we don't get a state what we want, we're going to lose out. And you first told me about it, then, then I was confirmed when I read the, the, the hand slaps or the punishment for, you know, we, we lose out a lot of grant programs and a whole bunch of stuff we lose out, a whole bunch of money we lose out on. That's why I'm very concerned that, because it, to me, and to me, it just seemed like it was just a rewrite. There was nothing, nothing new, nothing innovative. It was just a rewrite what we already did. So, and that's, that's my concern. And no, it shouldn't be up to me. We, we paid a consultant very well, Ms. McLean and Mrs., Greg, I'm sorry, I don't want to mess with your name, so I'm not even going to try it, but. No, please forgive me, please forgive me. But, and you just, you came on board kind of like in the middle of the whole process. So, but, you know, you're the experts and I, I, I expect you as experts in, in this field and have done it for many, many years to, I just, maybe, maybe my expectation was too high. I'm, I'm sorry. But I did, when the rewrite came, I wasn't familiar with it. And something innovative, something fresh, at least to address the fair housing issues. It's a meeting, you know, to have ingredients to talk about fair housing. So, I mean, we can, that's, that's one good way, but what are the metrics? What, what were the milestones? How are we going to know when or not we are, we're making it? How do we know where we're reaching our goals? Other than counting, we have six hundred here, six hundred there. How, how do we know? And I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see an answer. How do we know?
These are all very good points, Councilmember Francis. But I think what's important to remember is a lot of the details that you're speaking of are going to be the implementation of the policies. And this is a policy document, so it speaks in sort of the broad terms. And response to the letters from HCD are basically telling us exactly what to do. So what you said is technically true. The changes we made are a reiteration of what HCD has asked for. Because that's what's necessary in order to get this approved. But those details and all of that, you know, micro, you know, information that you're speaking of is certainly going to be something that's done, but it's not done in this document. It's done in the zone changes, the text amendments, the map changes and all of those other things. And then any city policies that need to change as well.
Yeah, well, well, what you say is true, but policy, it is, the HCD document is a document of policy that states our policy. But it also asks about metrics and milestones, and that's where you speak to implementation. And I saw no, besides a few issues by zoning that we've already done. I don't see anything that speaks specifically with that and, and they didn't see it either.
No, the things that they didn't mention were already good. And so.
No, we're talking about things, well, we're not worried about, I beg your pardon, I don't, I don't to be kind of pushy here, but it says while the element included some revision, it generally did not address ACD's prior reviews. Specifically stated, HCD's view denied include metrics, measure program effectiveness. We didn't even have taught how to know, if we have these little fair housing means, how are we going to know when or not they work? There are the loan programs, affirm commitments, demonstrate the actions, direct respond to the cities identified fair housing issues and need to overcoming and contributing factors. We didn't, I didn't see any of that. I think at least we at least got that much done. We might be in a better position. And it doesn't matter to me about what cities got approved, didn't approve. I'm like worried about Gardena, City of Gardena. And, you know, that's all. And it's, it's not, the housing is not spread over all the city.
Councilwoman Francis, if you check, there's a new matrix. The entire thing is blue. It's a table V three. And this includes, for example, the metrics on the right column. And it also includes some of the description of the policies and, and the geographic targeting and so forth. So I think that a lot of what you may have been looking for is actually in this table, which is all new.
I can share that.
I don't see it, but anyway, that's, that's all right. Those, those are just my concerns. You all go ahead with those. Yeah, I saw that part. It looked like that, that was already there.
No, that's all new. That's all new.
Brand new.
The whole table is several pages long. It's all new.
I saw it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but anyway, I, I don't mean, I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer, but I'm, I'm just real concerned about this. And that's all, especially when it's, it's, it's going to, it's covering issues that are going to, we're going to have to live with for the next eight, nine years. So I'm, I'm real concerned that it's. I know we don't want to tie ourselves down so much where we, we can't grow and expand and change, but I don't know. Maybe it's just me, you know, maybe it's just, it's, it's just me. I'm sorry. Thank you. But otherwise, it's a lot of work. I see, I can see all the work. That's a lot of work. It's a huge document. It's a lot of work and I, and please don't get me wrong. I do appreciate what you've done so far. I'm just concerned that it's not enough to get us to where HCD wants us to be. And that's, that's my issue. So thank you very much. You've done a great job. But, you know, our consultant, Ms. Tom's done a great, you know, great work. However.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Madam, we have somebody from the public that wishes to speak on this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do. Mr. Zahid Ahmed.
Oh, yes. Hi. Good afternoon, or good evening, City Council and City Mayor. So I just have some, some things I was thinking about that I just want to share. You guys are smarter than me, so you guys can probably take these ideas and develop them. The first one is going to be developing a fair housing diversity and inclusion. It's like a board, essentially the, 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 because right now they say, oh, send it to the federal government, the fair housing or the state. We need to have it in our city where it's documented. It's, you know, it's, it's addressed. If there's any discrimination or hate occurring, it has to stop. We need to promote diversity and inclusion. The next thing is also where we have a, it's, it's, it's the percentages of each, you know, and these are not the exact numbers. These are just approximations. The thirty seven percent for low, very low, twenty three percent for low income, moderate forty seven percent. These are not the numbers, but approximately those numbers. I would recommend having each of the buildings, let's say there's a building and built with three hundred units. We should require them to, and, and most cities are doing this, something like if you go to City of Roseville, they're in Sacramento. They have these townhomes, like five hundred townhomes. And each, and each one, and City of Tustin is also doing this. So they, they call them low income or, and these are actually not rental units. They're actually being sold. Where they have, it, it's not like this one building being built. It's like a big project, five hundred units. And they'll dedicate certain percentages of those homes. And I, I would say we would expand this. I remember one of the developments, it was like fourteen, twenty three units. It was only two units, if we can, you know, possibly make it where it matches those percentages. Also, I would recommend, there are some very big lots that, and, and I'll share, I'll email the city council with these. They're being sold. Developers are going to buy those lands up. If we add more parks to our city, the overall land use does go down. So that's, that's something I would recommend. It's one point one million dollars. It's a huge one point seven acre lot in northeast, northeastern Gardena. The next one is going to be expanding infrastructure and addressing those needs, especially internet. If you think about it, when the pandemic started, internet infrastructure wasn't the best and they had to add additional fiber optic cables to serve residents. A rent freeze initiative, especially for very low and low income for a long term, so at least fifty years. And then also a recreation fee waiver for apartment buildings that will add fifty percent of single home, or homeownership in Gardena. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so.
I did have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And these questions are going to kind of be random because I was writing them down as the conversation was going on. First question is, when does this revision do? Is there a deadline, a date?
Councilmember Love, technically, the deadline was October of last year with a hundred twenty day grace period until February of this year to adopt the housing element. But as I've indicated, because of the way HCD has changed their review process of just everything that they're demanding, only ten percent of the jurisdictions in this gag region have it approved. Until, because we are out of compliance, there are certain state law provisions that have kicked in regarding what types of developments we can't disapprove. There could be state action by HCD and the Attorney General, though I don't believe they'll come after any city that's making a good faith effort like Gardena is. But until our housing element is in compliance and it won't, once HCD approves it, it's still not considered to be in compliance till the zoning is done now. Then we get kicked out of eligibility for certain grants. of eligibility for certain grants.
Okay.
And other types of financial awards.
Okay, so until we get an A or get this, the housing element passed, we are losing out on additional funding?
We will be, I think, beginning in October.
Okay. So the second question is, is the city considering redoing the zoning in this city? I mean, I know the zoning has been outdated for a very long time and it should have been rezoned a long time ago to hopefully prevent some of these things from happening. Is the city or can the city consider just going in to do the rezoning to make this a little simpler or is that the problem? Short answer.
Councilwoman Love, when part of our housing element included what sites that were identified, are you showing the screen? That would be overlaid with high density, well, housing overlays that would go from, as Amanda indicated, an O three that would allow up to 17 dwellings per unit, the O four, the O five and the O six. And these, oh, these sites were spread throughout the city. We are currently working on the implementation provisions of these new overlay zones. And there will be one new zone itself, housing zone, that's not an overlay, that will be in the, what's now the Artesia Corridor area, that will be rezoned just for high density housing. We will be coming to the council for study sessions on the, the standards that we'll be looking for, but we have to be able to make sure that whatever standards we develop, that they'll actually be able to build to the density that are included in there. We do, one of the other commitments within our housing element was that we would look at the feasibility of doing an inclusionary ordinance for the city, which Mr. Ahmed stated. There are a number of cities who do inclusionary type ordinances where they require a certain percentage of the housing to be built at affordable levels. 15%, 10%, 10% is pretty much the standard, I think, on what they do for inclusionary. I know the City of El Segundo recently went out and hired Kaiser Marston or maybe another financial, was it Kaiser? Marston to look at what that cost and what the impacts are. Because while Mrs., well, it was said to do it at the percentage that we need for affordable housing, that would make the project infeasible from a financial standpoint.
Okay, so as much as I appreciate your answer, I'm going to go back to my question. This city has not and had not updated our zoning in years. And the last that I was aware of, it had been more than 30 years since the city had zoned, had updated our zoning. And I know in the past, the zoning has been updated on a per project basis. Is it possible for the city to go in and update the zoning to circumvent or prevent or possibly prevent all the issues or some of the issues that we're having to get this housing element passed? Two, what are the other cities that have been able to get their housing elements accepted by the state doing that we can consider doing? Or is there a drastic difference in the demographics and the city size and all of that? Because I, I, I prefer short answers instead of going all the way around the barn because there's a lot to this housing element. And I, I was keeping up with it, but I've kind of fallen back. But I just want to see, it's got to be something for, and I understand that the RENA numbers are ridiculous. Trust me, I, I get that. But I also am hopeful that there is some way that we can, we can meet in the middle. Because I agree with some of the things that Councilmember Francis, Councilwoman Francis brought up.
I can tell you that in, I'm trying to, to pull it up now, for 20 cities that are in compliance, they are cities with a large amount of open space or that had much lower RENA numbers. Gardena's RENA numbers went up, I think, like by 1,700% from before. But some of the cities that have been approved are Yucca Valley, Victorville, Wildamar, Harupa Valley, Hope, Holtville, out in Imperial, El Centro. As I said, none of the neighboring jurisdictions in this area and the South Bay Card have been approved.
Okay. But again, going back to the zoning question.
But, and, and I'm, okay, so we are working on, that's what I was trying to say, we are working on the general plan amendments and the zoning that's going to place these densities that allow these densities throughout the city with development standards.
So are we, so in, in, are you saying that we are updating a zoning for the city as a whole or are we still zoning per project?
No, as a whole, to incorporate those housing overlays that we identified, so those sites that were identified within those maps, the zoning would be, would be done for, for those sites.
So it is per project?
It's, it's not per project, no, it's, it's going to be done as a whole. But it's not required that it be done as part of the housing element.
I, I think maybe theme those, we've had, we do have projects that come in and they ask for zone changes and general plan amendments on a project by project basis and projects that come in for a specific plan, like the Gardena Transit Oriented Development Project and some of the other projects where traditional development standards don't apply. And those are on a project by project basis. And, and as a matter of fact, those projects are what we have used to justify in our housing element that commercial and industrial properties are able to be developed for residential.
Okay, so considering a number of very low and low or affordable housing that we have to provide, is there a way that the city can identify certain properties throughout the city, not concentrating in any one particular area, to maybe reserve or dedicate for those property, for those type of projects? Because I, my concern is that the, the market rate housing is going to come in and that's going to, that's, that's not a problem. But when it comes to meeting those numbers for the affordable housing, I'm, I'm concerned about how we're going to reach that number.
Good question. The each, we have four housing overlays proposed and each one of the different overlays is distributed in different parts of the city. And each one addresses a different affordability layer or level. So that part is, is addressed.
So can we work with developers and let them know that this, if, if, maybe there can be some type of incentive that we can give the developer that if they build those affordable housing units there, that we can get some of those numbers reduced?
Yeah, every, every time we build a unit, we get credit. And every time we build an affordable unit, we get credited in the right category. So part of the, the task that this document puts us toward is to develop incentives for developers and property owners to come at us with affordable projects or at least projects that have an affordable component. And we haven't developed those entirely, but we have ideas. Ms. Krantz mentioned a few earlier, but things such as lot consolidation, so if we make those easier and then offer, for example, the developer a little bit more density, you know, that's the example of the type of incentive that different cities are using. And we'll be looking at that and other ideas and trying to do just that. And then I think your other question was about what do we do if they don't, if they just do all market rate? That's what the buffer is for.
Okay. Thank you. Now, the other two questions are kind of in a different lane. Is the city, I know there, there were funding for veteran housing and disabled housing or grant funds for those, those type of projects. Is the city seeking any funding for that type of development? And will those type of units be credited towards our numbers?
Those units would be credited, but the type of grant will determine whether or not the city would go after it. If the grant is to, to pay for the changing of zone, then yes, the city would be looking at those once we're eligible again. And then if the grant is actually to build that, then the developers would be the ones seeking those grants.
So the city couldn't seek grant funding to, to build our own?
Well, we, we're not, we're not a developer.
Okay. Last question is to, is to address the, the balance for economics and retail. Because the last thing I want to do is turn Gardena into a bare room town, you know, adding that 507, 5,735 units can put us in at somewhere over 11,000 people. Are we balancing, or do we, are we, do we have someone shopping the economic side of this so that we don't tip the scale and there's no economics to support the residential?
I think, you know, that was one of the arguments the City of Gardena and many other cities made when this first happened was built out cities in order to accommodate these size of RENA numbers, we end up having to do overlays over just what one of the criteria was, was to put these houses near jobs, near commercial and retail zones. What has happened in our argument was, was that you're putting this astronomical number on a completely built out city and we're left with no choice but to do overlays on our commercial and industrial zones in order to accommodate these housing, which in turns eliminates some of the commercial development. One of the things that we do is talk with developers as they approach us. One of them, most recently, if you recall, the old black and white tile building, what's actually still there on Crenshaw?
Western.
Western, I'm sorry. As a developer approached us, the, one of the comments staff made was, we'd like to see some mixed use bottom floor restaurant use there. And the developer said, okay, I think we might be able to accommodate that. So from an economic development perspective, you know, we're at the table and we're proposing that, hey, you know, if you're going to put this housing, we also want some retail if we can get it. And so those are the things that we do to try and maintain some of our, our balance here.
So what, what can we do to make sure that when they present these projects, that they actually develop those retail? Because I know G3 did that with the Rosecrans project, an initial plan that was submitted had retail out front, and then G3 walked it back. And now we got housing directly right up on the sidewalk without a setback. And that's not a good look for us, especially on a major street like Rosecrans.
One of the things HCD wants to see is that in the mixed use zones, in the overlay zones, you can do 100% commercial.
Or residential.
Yes, residential, thank you. And unfortunately, if some, once it's zoned for that property, these, these projects have to be by right, no discretionary review. So it, we can't really force them.
I get that part, but when they submit the plan and the plan is, the plan includes retail and then they get the plan approved and then they walk that back and remove the retail, we have to have some leverage there in order to prevent that from happening.
Councilwoman Love, on the G3 project, it was not approved with retail. It was, they originally proposed it, but it was revised before it got entitlement. So there was no retail in the entitlement there.
Okay. Now, go ahead.
Unfortunately, a, a lot of this is going to have to be driven by the market. Right now, the market for residential is high in this area. And so we're seeing these commercial lots are being developed with residential. But that won't be forever. It'll, it'll start to create an imbalance in its own and then commercial will be more attractive. So one of the beauties of using an overlay is that commercial is not removed, it's still there. There's nothing to prevent it, an owner to develop a commercial use on their commercial property, even with the overlay. So when you give them both options and then the middle option is mixed use, the market at some point will say, okay, we've got a little bit too much residential now, we're going to start seeing some commercial developments. And it should keep balancing close to that norm. That's the hope anyway.
When, one of the things we have heard from retail developers like Trader Joe's even, they need the additional residential at the higher incomes and the density of residential to start putting the services into the north.
But at the rate we're going, with the house, we're building the housing, especially like the, like I, I have a real issue with the housing on Rosecrans, right up against the sidewalk. There needs to be some type of setback. But with, at the rate we're going and the type of developments that we're approving, will we even, will we even have space for a Trader Joe's to come in at? I mean, we have no large parcels to even bring in a grocery store on the North End. And so that's what I'm talking about when I say addressing and trying to reach the RENA numbers, but we still have to have that balance so that we have the proper retail to support this, this influx of residents that's coming in. We know the housing is necessary. But once I move in, I don't want to have to drive 10 miles to go take care of whatever it is I need to go take care of.
As I said, when, when we're putting these overlays, the commercial option is still there. So if, if we get a couple of good residential developments, it'll change the dynamics. And somebody like Trader Joe's may say, now you've got the population and you've got the incomes, we'll take one of these other commercial lots that hasn't been developed as residential. Don't really expect all of these lots to be developed.
No.
Not even close. So there will be a lot of commercial spaces still available.
I would be completely surprised, I'll be retired by then, but in 2029, if we reach our RENA number, I, 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 I don't see that happening.
So, so my last question is driven by the micro units. Is there a way that, I know that when that project came before council, it was brought up about the sizing and I believe Lisa, I believe Attorney Grant said that the city council approved the smaller square footage. Is that possible that we can go back and revisit that and increase that square footage from 350 to 500? Because my concern is with those micro units that's already approved and built on 169, I would think those units would be occupied by now. And so that makes me wonder if, if there is really a need for or a desire for that type of project.
Hasn't even opened.
State law requires the city to have zones for single room occupancy units, which is what these are technically, these are called micro units, I've heard them called cocoons, but they are SROs. And I think if you increase the size to 500 square feet, HCD would slap our hands for saying, no, you don't have zoning for the SRO units. I, I've got some ideas, we want to kick around with staff on them before they come public. But to get back to what was supposed to be traditional SROs, I think when the city adopted at the SRO ordinance and they put it into the industrial zone, I think everybody was probably thinking of more like the homeless shelter SRO type of units, not that somebody would come in and start developing these micro units. There, there may be ways to deal with it if it doesn't violate state law. And we will, it, it's certainly something that we've already been thinking about because I do understand the concerns.
Especially looking at putting another, we got 60 something on 169, that's not occupied. Then we approved a project for 122 that hasn't even broken ground. And that's a concern for me, that what's going to happen if they build these units, that saying, build and they'll come, may not be true in this case. But that's, that's all of my questions. Thank you guys so much, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Henderson, fetch your handout for a while. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, so we got a lot of competing interests in this whole discussion. So to, to Councilmember Love's point. So to to Councilmember Love's point, we don't want to turn into a bedroom community because we do need some commercial development and everything as well. But per EJ element, we'll we'll never ever, we know we'll never reach the arena numbers. We know we won't reach our EJ element criteria because we'll be a further disadvantaged community because we're going to have as much affordable housing as we can. And then on the economic development side, Trader Joe's, their business model is, doesn't support those that are living in those type of communities where you have all this affordable housing. And on top of the fact that we only have six square miles and we're built out, there's no more space for anything. So I'll stick with the EJ element. So then how do we get relief? Because a lot of our things in the EJ element says eighty three and a half percent of the people in Gardena use their cars. So now we're going to add all these houses and everything. Now we got more cars, which adds to our now our pollution exposure and air quality. How do we, how do we resolve all these issues? We've already got dinged for not having enough parks. How do we now meet the our economic development goals, our environmental justice goals, as well as our housing goals? We can't meet them all. At some point, we got to say, either we're going to be a bedroom community or we're going to develop some 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 commercial development. Because even if we zoned everything tonight, it still doesn't resolve all those issues with us being a disadvantaged community, being classified as a disadvantaged community. So where can we get some sort of strategy to figure out with HCD, with our developers, with ourselves and say, look, maybe we're not a Trader Joe's community if we're talking about having all this affordable housing. We we have to figure that out. I mean, how do we get this relief?
Well, I think you just recognized, I think, Councilmember, you've recognized for a number of years, we've been whipsawed by the the state between the, you know, they told you on one hand, don't build out, you know, in the fire communities and you got to protect against wildfires. And then they tell you, but you can't demand sprinklers and an ADU, even if it's in a very high fire hazard zone. It's like every department doesn't correlate and everybody gives us directives that you're exactly right. They they don't come together. We have put some programs into our housing element, like the developing the free Wi Fi in Raleigh Park by the end of twenty twenty three, which hopefully could expand even further to to help communities who don't have the internet access. We had a program about the call it a mini Uber, but with the G trans type things to provide more local type transportation that various, you know, stop areas where people wouldn't have to rely on their personal vehicles. I
I was going to say, you know, you just, you just expressed the same frustration that every community development director in California, all my colleagues are are just up in arms about. You know, within one department, we're here to do economic development, yet we also have to do housing and we have to address environmental justice. And we have to list how transportation affects all these things in addition to reduced parking requirements. And it's like a circus for us all. We're juggling these priorities, trying to meet certain goals of each category and don't see any light at the end of the tunnel on how we're going to hit all the goals. And so you ask, well, how are we going to, I guess, juggle these things? And that's exactly what it is. It's a juggling act. We're we're trying to hit goals that are just constantly moving. It's a moving target. And, you know, we're doing the best we can to to address each one.
I have a question. Hold on one second.
So so in regards to the environmental, the EJ element, then we'll we'll never meet those goals. Then what is the the premise of the environmental justice element? If we have to go down the housing route? Because if we're already being classified as a disadvantaged community at almost ninety three percent of our city's population, and then we go now with more affordable housing, we all agree affordability is important, then then we become kind of a schizophrenic community because on one hand, we got million dollar homes, but we don't have enough places for folks that can afford a million dollar home to shop. And yet we want some affordability, but you can't drive down RBB or Western now. You know, it takes fifteen minutes now to get across a six mile city. So, Mr. Suzuiuchi, in regards to community development directors, what strategies are you guys coming up with to stay, wait, we got to push back on something? Otherwise, no one will be able to achieve all their economic development goals, their environmental goals, as well as their housing goals. So so again, my question is, where does relief come from? Because otherwise, if we don't meet our environmental justice element goals, then we failed. If we don't meet our housing goals, then we failed. If we don't meet our economic development goals, then we failed as a community and not because we aren't trying as a council, as staff, but we just can't do it all. And we have finite resources on top of that because we're six square miles. So can we push back somewhere and say, okay, maybe the EJ element is not as important as housing? And maybe economic development, therefore, the next time the EJ element criteria is measured and somebody says, well, Gardena, you didn't reach your park quota. Well, look, but we got five thousand housing units. How, where does that happen?
Well, I hate to say this, but I mean, the housing element is the one where the state has authority to slap our hands and take money away. No, while we had to do an EJ element, and I think it's very important that those issues be addressed. Right now, the state is focusing on housing and that to continue getting grants and, you know, everything else. That's where the focus primarily needs to be. I do want to say a couple of things. Just because we put in the affordable, just because we're saying fifty one to seventy dwelling units per acre should be where affordable housing can go, doesn't mean it will go there. Remember, the GOTD project on Crenshaw is two hundred units per acre without one, one single unit of affordable on that project. So that's going to bring in higher income people despite it being dense. Density, high density is not the same as overcrowding under the terms of state law. Overcrowding under the term, under that way that term is used for HCD means more than one person per room. And that that means the kitchen, the living room and the bedroom, that not per bedroom. So I I just want to clarify, high density is not legally can run with those overcrowding.
But now those folks won't have a place to shop because if they can afford that, they want Trader Joe's and they don't want to go to Vons or Ralph's. They got Aldi's, I guess they can go to Aldi, that's kind of iron. So now they have to drive five, ten miles away to spend their dollars to get the things that they want, nine dollars a gallons of milk and different things like that. So we got a quandary, we can resolve it, smart enough people on this call, we can resolve it, it's a problem.
Councilman Henderson, can I add one important thing, though, to remember? We're not, we're not expecting a lot of one hundred percent affordable projects. Actually, we're we're getting mostly market rate projects and that'll probably continue for the near future because that's where you make the most money as a developer. But if we see ten percent of of the units in a big project as affordable, that would be huge because you just don't see that. So I I have a feeling that in that light, with ninety percent at market rate and only ten percent at affordable, it's not going to have the serious impact on economic development that that you're outlining to the extent that you're outlining it. So that's something else to consider. We're we're probably going to see mostly, you know, five percent will be affordable, if any.
I I also want to point out, I know, you know, we have a development project in for another specific plan that the council saw the presentation for a study session on Normandy, Normandy at what we've called this into site. And we know of several other specific plans that want come in, the same developers and also the developer that did the GTOD to come in again with very high density projects above what we're asking. When they come in for these things, the city can ask for, these are, those are totally discretionary. City can just say, no, we don't want it to the the zone chains and the specific plan amendments. But the city can also do the development type agreement like we did with GTOD where we're getting the moving billboard and we're going to get the million dollars, I think, overall for that during the life of the development agreement. So the council should be thinking about, what do you want to ask the developers for when they're coming in for these huge asks of density, of very high density? How much affordable do you want them to have? I mean, I, again, in other cities in El Segundo, where both Greg and I have worked, the developers have to come in with a study from Kaiser Marston or Hoffman or whoever to to show the their performance, where's the break even point? And what can they really do as far as affordable? Because every developer is going to go, I can't give it to you.
Right.
Because that's their mantra.
Got it. Thank you.
That's a good point. Okay, Councilmember Francis, she had your hand up next, and then I think Councilwoman Love, you want to say something?
Yes, just just so you know, my family bought in Gardena, bought home in Gardena in nineteen seventy four. And I pretty much have been there, been in Gardena the whole time. There's never been a lot of commercial development in the city of Gardena for whatever reason. And what was there mostly either moved, everybody talks about that rouse we had at one point where Green Melles is next step. But they moved because people were shoplifting. No, they moved because people weren't using that store because it was dark and the quality of food wasn't that good. And Ralph decided to consolidate to this this present location where Planet Fitness is, there used to be a supermarket there, but now it's Dollar Tree and Planet Fitness. So we have always understood that in order to get our needs met in terms of shopping goods and services, we had to leave the city in order to get there. There's just, it just wasn't there. And I doubt if there had been affordable housing is not what it used to be back in the eighties and and the seventies. Affordable housing, as I understand, is somewhere, somewhere at least, you know, ninety seven thousand dollars income a year for a family for two people, that's just two people. So it's not, when you talk about affordable and all of that, we're not talking about, you know, somebody making fifty thousand dollars a year in order to qualify. So that that's not there. We should just simply tell the developers if, I don't know what the number is, but I thought it was twenty percent of your development should be affordable housing. I don't know, maybe we kind of skated on that, but and if you want to build, then I think that most developers, perhaps this this South Bay Trust that we're talking about getting involved, that might alleviate their problem. But a lot of what's going in, I'll just go back to my my original point, is we just need to take another look. I don't know if with the setbacks you're talking about, the spot zoning, we are doing spot zoning. I know Attorney Grant doesn't like hearing that, but we do zone according to what our development is coming in. And we we adjust the zoning to to meet, so a developer can develop. And we've done some things. We went from a three bedroom from being twelve hundred square feet down to nine hundred square feet, a two bedroom down to eight hundred square feet, and one bedroom down to seven hundred square feet. So we have made some adjustments. It's not, as we're sitting here just kind of twiddling my thumbs and waiting until the other shoe drops. So we have done some things thanks to community development and things that are going on there. So there have been some changes, there have been some rezoning. There's still a lot left to do. The reason that the state put those winning numbers in because cities like, no, not in my backyard. It's okay to build, but not in my backyard. And so the state said, we're going to give you a target number that that's probably a reasonable to reach. They, you know, they're they're not foolish people. They know, they know what's out there. And so they they set these target numbers so at least to give us some push because you really had to had to kind of, a lot of cities needed a swift kick in order to get going and start developing housing because we do have a serious housing crunch. And to your point of Attorney Grant, is high density does not automatically create overcrowding. Economic conditions tend to create overcrow, but you have a fifteen or hundred unit development and it's very expensive. And you need at least three, three or four people to make that rent, that's what you're going to get. And just sleep in the living room and and two in the bedroom and and maybe one in the dining room. But that's what you're going to get. And that's that's just how it is. So again, and and then there's some grammar things that are going, somebody needs to go back and take another look and clean up some of the grammar in it as well. But I'm just real concerned that we didn't do adequate enough job answering questions. I don't know, did we talk about the the setbacks and that we we granted Rosecrans place that is sitting right there? And even the one right across the street next to the car wash? I don't know if that's included, was that included in our 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 housing element review? Did we, did we talk about all of that? We've done all of these things. And I don't know, we we did adequate enough job of talking about the things that we've done. Because again, most of when we answered those questions, it just seemed to be a restatement of definition of what we'd already said. So I'm I'm very concerned. But thank you for all, like I said, thank you for all your hard work and appreciate.
Okay, any more questions or comments?
I I do, and
I'm sorry, you had a question.
I hope they don't take long. The the high density and using that as leverage for the development agreements and giving the city some of what we want. Is there a reason why that has not been done with all of the housing projects that are already developed?
Um, Councilwoman, that's because the projects, except for the the GTOD that came in at two hundred units per acre, that was our first one with a development agreement. When a project comes in and all of the G three projects, for example, come in within the zone with what's allowed in the zone, they're by right, we have to approve them and we can't demand these extras from them. Okay, absent the include, unless the city adopts an inclusionary ordinance that says you have to provide ten percent affordable housing.
So so has the city written a standard minimum development agreement that we can?
You mean, a development agreement isn't standard. Development agreements only for the legislative actions if they're seeking something, usually something extraordinary like the GTOD very high density project. A specific plan, something that's not within the the normal zoning or just rezoning. I think we had one project with Olson where part of the property was R one and part of the property was R three. So we rezoned some of the property to the R three. That's not where you normally get a development agreement project in. But but do we, we don't have inclusionary zoning right now. As I said, that's one of the things we committed to do. And we first have to tackle the zoning and the general plan land use amendments. And then we will tackle coming forward to the council to discuss inclusionary housing and other types of incentives that we can work on for affordable and for the ADUs. And every other mandate the state has thrown on us plus what we'll see probably next in October when they pass the next.
Hopefully, we'll get it passed before then.
These, these are just the housing related things we're doing. Now you go back to the EJ, the economic development, there's a slew of other, you know, action items we need to take. So again, we pick our battles here in community development.
Okay, so when I mentioned the housing and when I mentioned the development agreements, I know that was something that I've been on G back for a very long time. And that was something that G back continued to push for in Gene Hill. That was like his mantra at every freaking meeting was the city having the ability to ask for development agreements. And, you know, when the developers, we know that developers are going to come in because we know the state is asking for these additional units. But when the developers do come in, I understand that there is no standard. But I'm saying that there's, I'm sure that there's some minimal But I'm saying that there's, I'm sure that there's some minimal, minimum things that we can ask for, for each high density or each request that the developments are asking us to give them. We have to start using that leverage and ask for something in return. Because my concern again is we add all of these, we add as many units as we can that the state is asking us for. I still have major concerns, the north end of town is in desperate need of commercial development. And like even, you know, the residents, one of the big issues was the dog parks. You know, if we can get some of the, that's not funny Lisa, because that's a serious subject on, on social media. And so if we can get the developers to maybe kick in some dollars to pay for some of these projects that the residents are asking for, then that's what we need to start positioning ourselves to do. That was my statement.
I, I laugh because that's been an issue we keep talking about here.
Okay, it'll come up again in this meeting. The other question is, when we are pushing back against legislative bills that are being written, one of the things that we do is we get everybody that we can get involved. Has any city gotten their residents engaged and maybe helped to push back against the state? Because our residents are concerned. Our residents are upset about the amount of housing development that's coming in. They don't understand it. And so is there an opportunity, I don't know if Attorney Vasquez can answer this, where maybe we can get our residents engaged and maybe they write letters to the state and support, you know, hey, we live here and there's, you know, we know that that's what you guys want and we want to help. But is that a possibility?
Well, I think, you know, with all of these bills, you hear us talk about letters that we're sending in opposition or in support. You know, our hope is that our residents who are watching our meetings, you know, that are, that are hearing us and that they are also welcome to send us. I mean, nothing stops them from getting a copy of the letter that we have sent and then, you know, copying the same letter and sending them or making the phone call to their state senator or to their state assembly member. You know, nothing is preventing from that from happening. And so when you guys are out there with the constituents letting, and you're hearing about this, you know, that is the thing that they also have the power to, to send additional letters and speak to their, the state assembly members and state senators also answer to them. You know, they're also there representing their needs.
Thanks. Let me piggyback off that as well. Because when I'm out there talking to residents, and I'll give you a perfect example. Less than a month and a half ago, when I was out talking to residents, they had a lot of questions about the SROs that are coming on one thirty second. And when I informed them and gave them accurate information as far as what was happening, what the state was requiring us to do as far as housing, the position we were in and what we were doing and how, you know, this is going to be beneficial, why we're building in the areas we're building it in. They understood exactly why. Now, as I've told them, I said, the issue wasn't necessarily us, it was what the state was requiring. And like they at that time were like, what can we do? And when you have elected officials from the state, when they have their open city council meetings, that's when a lot of times those residents go to them and they tell them about those issues. Not to mention sending letters similar to what Attorney Vasquez mentioned. So we've made those comments out there. I specifically walked up and down the street down Manhattan Boulevard, Manhattan Place. And when I was informing the residents of the SRO project, because they had a lot of bad information that was put out there, more like scare tactics. And when I explained, and then once they were reassured, they're like, oh, I understand, that makes sense. Okay, I see this isn't going to be as bad as what was told to us and scared us into believing. So I think they understand the process a lot better. And because we're all elected officials and we understand this process, we can explain this to people and they can be just as involved as they want to. And from time to time, you do have residents do this. Jane Hall was a perfect example of that. She would constantly write, she's a person we adjourned in our meeting at the last one. She would write to her assembly members, state senators and so on. And we have residents who do this all the time. They talk to them, they write letters to them and they let us know. And sometimes they even send us copies of this. So I think it's already being done. I mean, if we want to kick it up more, we can tell residents to do that. Any other questions or comments?
I, I, to piggyback on what you just said, Mayor Serta, if we can do that, if that's possible, City Attorney Vasquez, that if that's going to help us, if that can help us get the state off of us, off of our backs with the numbers that, that they've set forth with the arena, it's worth a try because it seems like everybody is freaking out if we don't reach these numbers and if we don't get this element plan approved. Maybe it'll be a little easier if we can get our residents involved. Just a thought.
You're, you're always welcome, you know, especially because you guys are constantly sending letters in support and opposition. Those letters are public documents, you know, that they can simply contact the city manager's office, request a copy of that letter and then they can be, you know, copy the same, the substance of the letter, you know, that they can choose to send themselves. That, you know, that's always something that's available to the residents.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, so at this time, the motion that needs to be taken is to approve the new changes. So anything that was highlighted in blue, that's the motion we're taking to highlight just those changes. So if it's anything that was outside of the scope of that, that's not what we're voting on, only the revisions that were made. So at this time, I'm going to ask if somebody can make a motion, make a motion, I'm sorry, to the changes to the adopted housing element for the resubmission to HCD at this time. Is there a motion for that?
I'll move it. Okay. I'll second, see if it gets through. I'll second, see if it gets through.
Okay, Rodney, was that you? Okay, so a motion's been made by Councilmember Tanaka and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Uh, no, it, it, it needs some, some more work, no.
Councilmember Love.
I'm gonna abstain.
Mayor Serta.
Yes, okay. So that's moving forward there. Okay, next item up is item number thirteen, Mr. City Manager, COVID nineteen update.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, I'll keep this rather brief. Our COVID nineteen numbers in the city has increased five hundred and thirty-two since the last meeting. So we're now up to eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-four cases. Total death count fortunately has not risen, remains at two hundred and seventy. And we are in the high criteria for COVID cases, meaning that if this continues two weeks from when it was declared, then we go back to indoor mask mandates. Mayor Serta, that ends my report.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on that? Okay. All right, I'm sorry, you said the mask update goes back into effect?
Uh, two weeks from the, the time that the county increased us to put us in the high criteria. And I, I don't recall when that is.
Is that, that's this week if I'm not mistaken, right?
Mayor Serta, if, if the county decides to do it, it would, they would be issuing something this Friday.
Oh, okay, this Friday. Okay, got it. Okay. Okay. Sorry, were there any other questions or comments? No? Okay, next up is item number fourteen, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item fourteen A is the authorization to purchase five patrol vehicles from National Auto Fleet Group in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-one cents and expend build out cost in amount of ninety-five thousand eight seventy-six, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty cents. Staff recommends that the city council authorizes the police department to purchase five new unused twenty twenty-two Ford utility police interceptor all wheel drive vehicles from National Auto Fleet Group at a total cost of two hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-one cents, including a ten point two five percent state, state sales tax and a eight dollars and seventy-five cent tire tax per vehicle. Staff also requests city council authorization to expend the vehicle build out in the amount of ninety-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty cents. The ongoing replacement of capital equipment is necessary to maintain a fleet inventory that is safe, efficient and liable. And the, this purchase of five new patrol vehicles will replace older vehicles that we have reached, sorry, that have reached their, at the end of their useful life due to age, mileage and general wear and tear. National Auto Fleet Group will sell and deliver the new vehicles available under the Sourcewell Master Vehicle Contract Number zero nine one five two one dash NAF, a discounted price of thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars each for a total cost of forty-two, forty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and four cents per unit, excuse me, including sales tax and tire tax, making total expenditure for all five vehicles, two hundred and ten thousand nine twenty-five and twenty-one cents. Vehicles will be assigned to patrol and will be purchased using previously budgeted funds from the city's equipment revolving fund. South Bay Regional Public Communications Authority, or SBR PCA, is our local vendor for vehicle build outs and using serviceable equipment from five decommissioned Ford police interceptors will result in a significant savings in build out costs. SBRPCA has quoted a cost of nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-six cents per vehicle for a total cost of ninety-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-six and thirty cents. The vehicle and build out cost will be covered under the city's equipment revolving fund. What is required is to authorize purchase.
Okay, does any member of the council have any questions or comments? Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, if you could ask the chief, did they, have they received any data on the use of the, the electric vehicles? I know it was being tested in the, in the field by a few agencies in regards to their responsiveness and availability. Do we have any update on that?
So, Councilmember Henderson, the hybrids are the one being tested by PDs in our area. EVs, a full EV, cars are not being tested in South Bay. I know for a fact that there's one PD in the northeast area, Cambridge, has a full EV fleet. In fact, they're Teslas. And they are, they don't have any data yet as far as range, infrastructure. I mean, you know, you'd have to have a full infrastructure to support that, charging stations and whatnot. So at this point, for the full EVs, there is no data that can support and sustain full build out.
Yeah, Cambridge would be kind of skewed data because that's a different community than communities within LA County, so.
Yeah. For the hybrids, it's about a year wait for data.
Okay, I was just curious, thanks.
Yeah.
Any more questions or comments? Councilmember Francis?
I have a quick question. So the patrol vehicles, are these SUVs or just regular four door sedan type cars?
Yeah, we don't, we don't purchase any sedan anymore, Crown Vixxer, we don't buy those anymore. We, we have these explorers, these SUVs, it's more robust, you know. And they are very similar to the ones that we purchased before.
Okay, so eventually we're going to replace our sedans with the, where there'll be a mix. But these five that we're buying are this Explorer SUVs?
Yes, yes, these are all SUVs.
And the additional amounts, just to put all the bells and whistles and lights and.
Right, and that's why, you know, it has to be uniformity as far as the cars that we purchase because of the lights, the cages, the, you know, everything, the build out cost is expensive. So you can very well put a, you know, Hyundai Tucson, like, you know, buy it from the street, put it in there with the service, you can't just do that because the lights and all that doesn't fit. It has to be, you know, something that's reliable, something that's true and tested, which these are.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Madam City Clerk, we have a speaker on the side of?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do. Mr. Zahid Ahmed.
Okay.
Hi, good evening or good, good night, city council and city mayor. So I have some, you know, recommendations. The first one would be installing many cities, if you drive to Torrance, they have like vast majority of their fleet has ALPR mounted cameras. Those, the benefit of those is they, they can last about ten, about ten to twelve years. You know, they go from one vehicle, you un, undetach them, but you can literally install them on the new vehicle. It, it, they, they usually will last maybe, I would say, five vehicles easily. Motorola builds, makes these. City of Torrance has a robust system, I would say, maybe consulting with them, about asking them. That's why they're catching, you know, all, all those, you know, all the criminals. Axon, I believe, the body, the camera in the cars, those are really good, 4K. They also have a ALPR system. I would, you know, recommend the city, it, you know, activating that possibly if it's not activated. Also, the hybrid, it's the same vehicle, literally, it's the same vehicle. All they did is in the, in the, in the trunk area or below the, the backseat, they put a little battery, it's not even that big, it's probably like a car battery times three, only that big. And it gets absorbed essentially, it's, it helps the vehicle actually be more grounded to the ground. So if officer is going high speed, making a fast turn, accelerating, the vehicle is more pinned down to the ground and corner, will corner better. And the, the, the takeoff speed is much, much faster. And, and you can look at the data on Ford's website, talk to some cities. The biggest city I would really, I was, I'm impressed is the Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD. They respond to very, very higher crime than the city of Gardena. They have, you know, so much crime in certain areas where these vehicles, they have hybrid, some of their vehicles are hybrid. They are able to respond and they're actually getting there faster and smoother. If they're driving in an area, they're not, the engine noise, they're not hearing that. They can literally hear if someone's running, if, you know, because the engine is the biggest thing. And unless a officer pulls someone over, you, you don't want someone walking behind them, he won't be able to hear him. There, the engine is so loud with a hybrid, actually shuts down and, and the battery is really big. So it's actually be able to support everything, all onboard communications, cameras, you name it, everything will operate. Officer safety increases and our officers, we have so many officers being injured in line of duty. We, we, we should give them this, this technology so they're safer out there. And then even considering a Tesla for the watch commanders, usually they're not out in the field that often. They can still respond close three if they need to. And so that's, thank you so much.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, do we have any more speakers?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? No? Okay, so at this time, can I get a motion to authorize the purchase?
I'm on.
Is there a second? Oh, wait, 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 hold on, hold on. Is that a second or is that a question or comment?
A second.
Okay, second.
Sorry.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, a motion was made by Mayor Protem Tanaka and a second by Councilmember Francis. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis. Councilmember Francis.
Are you muted still?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Love.
Yes.
Mayor Serta.
Yes. Okay, next up is item number fifteen A, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item fifteen A is to approve the proposed master plan to proceed with the design and construction document phase of the Massukai Park Improvements, Job Number Eight Two Zero. At this time, I'm going to invite Director Rigg to provide us with a brief presentation on this agenda item.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, I'm going to present you the master plan for Massukai Park. The master plan was began several years ago in the effort to provide a comprehensive upgrade of the aging and outdated facilities. It has followed a similar path as the Senior Aquatic Center for which, just so you know, demolition will begin this next Monday. Progress on the public participation portion of the project during COVID caused a delay, but we're back on track now. Massukai Park was originally dedicated in nineteen sixty and is a four point five acre size. Several upgrades to the park have been done since that time. Most recently, the two large shade structures and prior to that, the new playground equipment. As mentioned, the development of master plan has been going on for quite some time with the effort being led by our architects from BGB. And we are at the final step with the city's review and recommendations. On the left, you can see the major items within the master plan. And in particular, I want to highlight the new community building that is in desperate need of replacement. The first step in the master plan was to create an inventory of what is in the park. As you can see, many of the components within the park are quite old and need a replacement. The next step of developing master plan was to understand what the community wanted within the park. Workshops were held and surveys were completed by our residents over several years. These results were compiled by architects from BGB and the results guided the elements within the master plan. Lots of different competing needs with limited amount of space and they did a fine job of trying to balance all those. Within the plan, there are a total of thirty-five individual items that will be changed for the comments that we received through. per the comments that we received through the public outreach. One major item, as I mentioned, is a new community building in the upper right-hand portion of the property where the existing building is located. Next, you can see down here, there's three pickleball courts next to a multipurpose synthetic turf area that can be used for a variety of different activities. One of the items heavily desired by the community was a walking path within the park fence, which you can see goes around the baseball diamonds and around the field here. That was probably the most requested item. Other areas that are renovated include the grounds of the baseball fields, irrigation, basketball courts, surfaces, and vegetation. Our conceptual interior of the new community building is shown here. Please note that additional teen space will be located within the final design. The programming for this, Ms. Santin, will be working on further to balance the needs of what people want within the building. A new prefabricated restroom would be installed near the baseball diamonds. This would be similar to the restroom facility we recently replaced at Raleigh Park. Here are close-ups of the new surface seen within the top lot. So, we keep the existing equipment, get rid of the sand and the old rubber replaced with new, the three pickleball courts, as well as the multi-use synthetic turf area. Two other new items within the park would be ADA parking adjacent to a new exercise station area with multiple bases of equipment, as well as a donor tire walk and reflexology lab rent. The baseball area would be significantly renovated with new lighting, irrigation, bleachers, and the restroom building. Please note that the West Basin Water District plans to bring recycled water to the park, and the design will incorporate the necessary connections and irrigation. The preliminary cost estimate for these improvements is a little over seven million dollars. It is our intent, we've already begun this, is to aggressively seek additional grant opportunities to partially or fully fund the park. Again, similar going down the same path that we did for the swim and senior center. Our next step will be to procure an architectural firm to begin the construction drawings for the project. We're here to seek additional input from the council and additional modifications is needed. This would conclude my presentation. I'm available, as well as a representative from the architectural firm, Art Guy, Director Santin, and Kevin Quark to answer any additional questions. And I will come back to the plan here and leave it up on the screen if there's questions or comments that I can answer.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any questions at this time? Councilwoman Francis?
How long, what's the timeline of this? How long is it going to take to complete the whole process?
We haven't put anything together. Usually, plans for a project like this would take a year to design, six months to bid, an award, and then a year to build. So, if we pulled the trigger tonight on this design, probably two and a half to three years.
Two and a half to three years?
Yes. Very, very similar to the timeline that we have for the swim and senior center.
Now, we have a lot of interruption due to the cause of COVID. I think COVID slowed us down with that, but anyway.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Director Rig, is there a reason, how many restrooms, let me ask you a question, how many restrooms does this plan have?
We have one restroom at the main community building, and then we have the second restroom adjacent to the baseball field.
And is that buildings or is that a total of two, two restrooms?
Two buildings with, I believe, two restrooms in each, so a total of four.
Okay, great, because restrooms with the number of people that's coming into the city and the number of people that's going to want to use this facility, two restrooms. As a woman, restrooms is a big issue for us because it's always a line for the women's restroom. And, you know, when you look there with a side eye, we use the men's restroom, so that's good. The second question is, what is the size of the community center? I mean, I'm sure it's in this document somewhere, but just a quick, not the classrooms, but the actual large area.
The entire building is approximately fifty-five hundred square feet.
I know, but the large, I can't really quite read the writing on that slide that you just moved from, but it said that there's going to, the large meeting room, what's the size? Do you know the square footage of that room is?
I do not, but I can get that for you.
Okay.
And just to go back to what I had said before, is, as I mentioned, this is conceptual. As we go through final design and additional programming, Director Santin would be heavily involved and go through all the details and make sure it's as workable and as appropriate as possible for the needs that she believes the building will be used for.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Zahid Ahmed.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Hi, good afternoon, City Council and Mayor. I was wondering for the perimeter or the walking area of this park, many cities and universities have a, it's called a soft foam walkway. So, essentially, if you're walking on it, it's used mostly athletes and seniors. It does not damage your knees and the cartilage in your knees. So, I would strongly recommend that. And I believe the city of Redondo Beach has one in their park where it's a football field in the middle, football field, and it converts into a soccer field. And essentially, there's a, it's like a, it's a, it's like a, it's like a plastic resin. It's very, it's called a soft foam walkway, and essentially has seven walk, seven like paths, and like seven lines in there. So, essentially, seven people can walk laps in that, and they're able to, if they walk, I think, ten laps, it's like two miles. If you walk like twenty laps, it's like four miles. So, I would strongly recommend even that. The building, we need solar, and, you know, making sure we purchase the right air conditioner, because if we buy a lower air, like less tons of air, I believe it's like, it's measured in tons or square footage. If we buy more, because the doors and windows might be open, leaking air. This can serve as a senior cooling center, since we are going through global warming in a sense. Incorporating natural light also on the roof would be really good. And installing a computer center potentially, or wiring the building for, to serve for the power demands and internet demands. So, for example, like CAT five, CAT six internet cabling, and also, or fiber optic, you know, either or. Fiber optic is just very expensive, and power, because if you have, like, fifty people with laptops using it for like a computer lab, you need that power implementation. And also installing cameras in each room. That's the biggest thing I think our city needs is more cameras all around our city campuses, watching each room, and sort of, you know, saving onto maybe a cloud server, like an Amazon cloud server, or even, you know, partnering with maybe an Axon. Axon has a really good program. The Body Camera Company is really good. They, you know, all the video is stored on their servers. And they offer, I believe, their cameras that people can install, or police departments and cities could install throughout their, you know, community, and they don't look like cameras. They look like emergency exit lights or the exit sign, and they're actually Axon cameras. And they're cloud, you know, servants backing up into the cloud and save for many, many years. So, that's what I would recommend. Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay. Madam City Clerk, is any more speakers?
No, Madam Mayor, we don't have speakers.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just to follow up on Councilmember Love's question, the large meeting room appears to be six hundred and ninety-three square feet, twenty-one by thirty-three.
Okay. All right. One suggestion, Director Rig, the speaker had mentioned about that soft foam. I think something maybe, if we can consider if the pricing is good, if we, just as an option.
We can absolutely, and his other suggestion is something I did at my last park I built, which is to put mile markers around the path so people, it's encouraging and helps people keep track of their exercise. So, we will definitely be doing that. And we'll investigate the soft surfacing, and the building will definitely have solar.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Francis?
Just a quick one. I understand the sand is going to be replaced in the totter where the play area is for the little ones, and it's going to be replaced with, I was at one of the outreach meetings, and that was one of the things that the parents liked. They wanted the sand to go. So, but it's going to be replaced with this tile. How are we going to keep that clean?
The, so tip, so what's out there right now is a port-in-place, kind of a crumb rubber, and then there's the sand. The rubber tiles, they just, they do stay clean. They're multicolored, kind of like the carpet in a hotel. It doesn't show the marks. What we really liked about, and I've done it at other parks, with the tiles, is when they get damaged, because people have a tendency to go out there and vandalize, is you can replace them without replacing the entire cohesive port-in-place rubber mats or rubber surface. So, they're very durable, and then they do, they are replaceable, similar to what you, we also do with commercial-grade carpet. You do it in squares, so when you have damage, you can replace easily.
And this is the redo of the park, it's going to go in face, it's not, you're not just going to knock everything down so the park won't be, people won't be able to use the park at all, but is that right? You do it like a little bit of time, that pickleball court that, you know, they have on our range, it's going to, it's going to be more of improvement because I understand that was very popular as well.
No, there's two tennis, tennis courts. There's no pickleball courts.
Okay.
As far as keeping the park and portions of the park open during construction, that's something we'll try to do. Of course, the quicker it gets done and the more access we allow for the contractor, the quicker and cheaper it'll be done. So, it's always a balancing act. And that's, that's a good point, and it's definitely something we'll work with our design consultant on. So, we come up with the construction documents. If there's a possibility of phasing and trying to keep different areas of the park open during certain times, we'll do that.
Now, as I know, the picnic area and the playground equipment, that's relatively new. So, I hate to see that.
Yeah, we'll work to, even if we allow a contractor in there all at one time. You're right, the picnic area is kind of on its own. It could be maintained. Once the rubber is done around the playground equipment, that could be reopened. The baseball fields, there'll be some downtime on those because it's an entire irrigation system replacement so that the fields will get dug up and redone. So, I could see components being unavailable for a certain amount of time. But it's a good point that we don't want to shut down everything for a large period of time.
This is, this is probably, it's going to take two to three years.
No, construction will take about a year. The whole process, we need about a year to design, six months to bid and award and get the contractor immobilized, and then about a year of construction.
Okay. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Riggs, in regards to tearing up the field, can we put stormwater capture, some sort of something underneath that? Is that something we're considering to put underneath that as well?
We could.
Does that increase the cost of the project?
Oh, yes.
At that point? It does? Okay.
It does, but we're exploring a similar project at the Willows, which is to divert more water in there and use dry wells to not only use it for, to help clean the stormwater, but also to help recharge the groundwater. So, something similar, we could put it in to the design, look for grants. And if we get grants and it doesn't cost us anything, then great. But those systems could cost several million dollars. They are large and expensive.
Right. And two more things. So, and we're looking to make the community building LEED certified if it's applicable here?
The LEED certification is, if it can obtain the certification without us spending a whole bunch of extra money, absolutely. But oftentimes, my experience with obtaining the LEED certification, it does increase your costs significantly. For the current building codes entitled twenty-four, everything will be very energy efficient with solar, the right windows, insulation, water features and light. But if it's something that the council desires us to pursue, we'll work that into the design as much as possible without significantly increasing the cost.
All right. And last question in regards to the design phase of the project. When do you want the technology portion of the infrastructure to go in? Do you want us to prove the pilot at Raleigh first before we decide what we need to do as far as addressing our broadband issues and equity issues and everything? How should we approach that?
It does seem to me, I think it's independent of this effort. It can be built into if what we're looking at is fiber and antennas. We'll have to think through that a little bit more. It could be added on at the end, but I could see some, could we, if we're anticipating that type of development within the park, we could at least put conduit underground and pre-plumb, kind of like you do for a new home for solar, or they used to, is you'd at least have the conduits in so that you don't have a huge expense tearing things up. So, that's definitely something we'll bring up with the designer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? No? Okay. At this, Madam City Clerk, did I ask you if we had any speakers or?
We don't.
Okay. In that case, then can I get a motion to approve the master plan?
So moved.
I'm sorry, I didn't see who said that.
I said motion.
Okay.
Motion. So moved.
Okay, in a second. Okay, Madam City Clerk, motion was made by Councilwoman Love and a second by Councilmember Henderson. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
And Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay, next up is item number fifteen B. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Serta, members of the City Council, agenda item fifteen B is to approve purchase of the twenty-twenty-three Timco Model six-hundred regenerative air sweeper from Timco in the amount of four hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Public Works Street Sweeper Equipment Purchase, job number five-one-five. Staff recommends that City Council approve the purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Timco Model six-hundred regenerative air sweeper from Timco, again, in amount of four hundred and forty-three thousand one seventy-seven and forty-four cents. This is including sales tax and freight. Public Works Department currently has four street sweepers, and the age of the street sweepers range from fourteen years, twelve years, ten years, and three years old. The life expectancy of a street sweeper is ten years per industry standard, and typically, the oldest street sweeper in the fleet is retired first. However, the oldest street sweeper has a two thousand and eighteen engine and is fully operational, while the twelve-year-old street sweeper has exceeded its life expectancy and is non-operable. With the purchase of the Timco Model six-hundred regenerative air sweeper, the purchase will retire the twelve-year-olds, twelve-year-old street sweeper and reduce the maintenance and constant upkeep that it required throughout the years. And the purchase will allow staff to operate more efficiently and effectively, to ensure clean rides away. And this purchase will also ensure that there are two backup street sweepers available in case either or both street sweepers being used malfunction. Per Gardena Municipal Code Ordinance Number seventeen-eighty pertaining to open market purchase procedures and purchasing, the policy APP dash two thousand and eighteen dash zero-zero-three, section four B pertaining to cooperative purchases, the department will piggyback off of HGAV by contract number SW oh-four dash twenty. SGAV by negotiates contracts for pricing on goods and services frequently used by government agencies. The state contracts result in significant cost savings to the city and allow vendors an opportunity to compete with their lowest bids and enables municipalities obtain the overall best price for their procurement. What's the impact is for the approved budget amount for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, five hundred thousand, which is four hundred thousand from sewer front and one hundred thousand from the gas tanks fund. What is required is to approve the purchase.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any questions or comments? No? Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this?
No, we do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so at this time, then, can I get a motion to approve the purchase?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, there was a motion made by Councilwoman Love and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
And Mayor Serta?
Yes. Okay, next up is item number seventeen A. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Serta, members of the City Council, agenda item seventeen A is the approved purchase of- Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item seventeen A is the approved purchase of seven forty-foot compressed natural gas or CNG buses for a six million, one hundred and thirty thousand, four twenty-one. An authorized program total of six million, seven forty-three and uh, four hundred, and four hundred and sixty-three dollars. Between fiscal year twenty-seventeen and twenty-twenty-three, G-Trans will be replacing its entire fleet of forty-foot gasoline electric hybrid buses that have reached the end of their useful lives. Staff developed a, uh, two thousand and seventeen, two times twenty-three fleet replacement plan that was approved by the city council in two thousand and seventeen, dictating that G-Trans would pursue both CNG and zero emission buses with an eventual conversion to all zero emission buses by twenty thirty-four. Council approved the purchase of seven zero emission buses back in March and fourteen CNG buses in April, and now uh, that required federal funding is available. G-Trans is ready to secure its final order of CNG buses to replace aging gasoline hybrid, gasoline hybrid buses in our fleet. G-Trans has purchased, can purchase CNG buses under an assignment clause through an existing contract by LA um, county, uh, MTA Metro. And under the assignment clause, G-Trans has reserved up to forty-six CNG buses under Metro's two thousand and seventeen contract number OP two-eight-three-six-seven dash zero-zero-zero, Part A for up to forty-six forty-foot CNG buses from El Dorado National, uh, which is in California Incorporated. CNG technology has a longstanding proven history throughout the transit industry for its reliability, range, and lower greenhouse gas emissions. The new buses also offer safety improvements, including the latest safety features and designs, which includes improved American with Disabilities Act or ADA amenities and boarding ramps, and provide safer, cleaner operating environment for G-Trans passengers and employees, improve fleet reliability, and allow G-Trans to remain in compliance with the California Air Resources Board or CARB and the South Coast Air Quality Management District or SEA QMD regulations. Therefore, as the staff recommends, the city council authorized purchase of seven C, uh, CNG buses from El Dorado National, California, Inc. For a total price of six million, one hundred and thirty thousand, four twenty-one, which includes sales tax and delivery fees, and authorize a ten percent contingency of six hundred and thirteen thousand, uh, forty-two dollars to account for any unforeseen changes, only to be approved in advance by G-Trans staff. The total recommended authorization, authorization not to exceed the project total of six hundred, six million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, forty, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. G-Trans has existing federal, state, and local funding available for, for its bus replacement program to purchase seven CNG buses. There is no impact to the general fund, and what's required tonight is approved purchase and program total.
Does any member of the council have any questions or comments? Councilmember Francis?
I have a question, uh, this, this too, I was wondering, one, why did it take nineteen modifications from twenty seventeen to now to, to finally get this, uh, order going? That was, I kept reading about nineteen modifications? And then number two, wasn't it, um, I guess, early part of the year, give me approved some type of safety uh shield or something for our, our drivers? And were the bus, I didn't, I didn't see in the diagrams, the pictures where that part was a part of it? Is, is that something that we have to add on after the buses are purchased?
Yeah, so, uh, for the purpose of the safety barriers, that's for COVID. Um, this is something that, uh, we added on after, uh, the bus purchase. The bus manufacturer will only, um, manufacture the buses in, in its original specs. However, we, you know, modify it for barriers. Um, you know, that's, that's, that's added on, but I think, um, I may have to ask, uh, Director Crespo to, to come in and, and explain the, the, uh, the, the lead time, you know, as you're referring to, as far as why did it take that long and, and possible, uh, barriers. Uh, let's see if this is included in, in this purchase. I, I don't have the details of the, the contract with me, but maybe Director Crespo can.
I did see, but the, uh, made the modification for the tap card, I guess so. Uh, our bus will be contactless, cash or just the tap card only?
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, we'll hear from Director Crespo, but, but for the, the older buses that we have, we had to retrofit the, uh, the Plexi glass. But, uh, Ernie, is this, uh, this, this purchase, is this including, uh, barriers now?
Uh, good evening, Council, uh, Mayor, uh, City Manager, yes. The, these new buses will have the, the permanent barriers on them. So like Mr. City Manager mentioned, the previous one was more COVID-related barriers. These are the permanent, uh, barriers that are similar to all LA Metro buses.
Mm-hmm, and there'll be cameras inside the bus as well as outside of the buses?
That is correct.
Exactly, so.
That is correct, all our fleet are equipped with cameras inside and outside. And then I think to answer your other, uh, question regarding the fair, um, all our buses have the same type of fare boxes. And while it, while we, 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 uh, hope for faster movement of passengers, so, so they don't use cash, we, we still accept cash. So tap, all our buses accept tap or cash.
And why nineteen modifications? Why couldn't we have just done it? I kept going.
You know, this is, this is, uh, I know, it kind of looks like a lot of changes, but this is a metro contract that they have initiated, and so they've made nineteen amendments to it in essence. Right, so we, ours is pretty straightforward, it's one contract, but they've made many changes throughout the life of that contract.
Yeah, yeah, it's a long one, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's okay, there's twenty seventeen, I know I asked this question before, the original contract twenty seventeen, but we're still operating under the same contract because the, the deal was never totally completed, is that correct?
That's correct, and I think, uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Okay, Madam City Clerk, um, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on this side?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, if there are no more questions or comments at this time, can I get a motion to approve the purchase and, uh, and program totals?
So moved.
Okay, I think, uh, Councilwoman Francis had her hand up.
Second.
Okay, uh, Madam City Clerk, Madam City Clerk, um, motion was made by Councilwoman Francis and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
And Mayor Serta?
Yes, okay, next up is item number eighteen A, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Serta, members of the city council, agenda item eighty, agenda item eighteen A is the discussion regarding the issuance of cell phones to elected officials. At the July twelfth, twenty twenty-two council meeting, Councilmember Wanda Love issued a directive seconded by Councilmember Paula Francis. Agenda is a discussion regarding the issuance of cell phones to elected officials. Recommendation is for city council to provide staff with direction as to whether or not council would like to approve issuing cell phones for elected officials, and if staff is to prepare and present a cell phone policy. Uh, the estimated city cost to provide cell phones to elected officials is approximately four thousand two hundred annually for seven elected officials. The estimated plan breakdown is fifty dollars per month per phone, which covers unlimited national calls. What's required tonight is to discuss issuing cell phones to elected officials and provide staff direction regarding a cell phone policy.
Okay. Is there any comment or questions at this time?
Um, I guess I would have a question. Um, actually, I don't have any questions.
Any comments? Okay, I, I'm personally curious what other council members are doing right now, um, as far as, um, as it relates to returning phone calls or dealing with staff, I don't know if anybody wants to share that or not.
Maybe I'll, I'll start by explaining why I am requesting a cell phone. And I understand that maybe not all council members or elected officials want or need a cell phone. But because of my involvement in the community, my capacity as the Chamber of Commerce's CEO, I've been accessible to the community. Now, as a city council member, I need to separate those two jobs. Um, I need to make sure that the, my personal, my responsibility to chamber, and my other businesses do not get mixed up with city business. I currently have two cell phones, and I keep my business separate. I do not want to wind up in a situation where there's some, an issue, and I have to turn over access to all of my personal devices for any investigation, or I don't want to wind up in a Hillary Clinton situation. So if other council members do not want or wish to have a cell phone, that's fine. But I personally, because my level of involvement and engagement in the community, I need one.
Okay. All right, um, I don't know if any other council member wants to share. I know for myself, uh, I constantly return uh, phone calls to residents, to staff, I use my personal phone. Um, if I have to, uh, most of the time when people contact us, they do call our secretary here to get in contact with us, um, and we're emailed over, uh, the information, you know. Um, usually the secretary will see whether it's somebody who's just soliciting us, um, separating that from, you know, a resident or something of that nature. And then we'll call them back. For myself, because I personally don't like to give my number out, because I'm bombarded with a lot of people now who've gotten my number as the mayor. Um, but, and they will call all the time. Um, I star six-seven and return that phone call back, that's always seemed to work for me. Or if maybe I can't come in here to City Hall to do that. Never had a problem separating the calls, I do know there are things like a Google number, which I have used for elections and campaigns, which is completely separate. Um, so, and I'm on the phone every day, every day with residents. Um, and even with our staff, uh, just because, you know, uh, returning phone calls, businesses, developers, et cetera. So, um, that's just been my personal thing, I mean, I personally didn't see the need to get another cell phone. Um, and that's, you know, in everybody's preference. I've been on this job now for thirteen years, I don't know how any other council member, you know, does, but it does help me having the secretary, because, um, a lot of times, um, you know, they just take those calls that we need. Um, I've never gotten my, my job or my personal or even city messages or any of that mixed up at, at any time, especially because the secretary emails us most of the information that we need. And for myself, and I believe several other council members, that's how they get their messages sent to them as well. That's why we have our iPads, um, that has email access on there as well as what we use to do our council meetings. Um, and to me, that was a great improvement, but we received that several years ago from even having our really thick agenda packets, so, um, fortunately, I can afford an unlimited plan, and it doesn't cost me anymore to, you know, purchase this. Now, um, again, I don't know how anybody else feels on that.
Hmm, well.
Go ahead, ask one, Francis?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, you, you, you started the last time, because I, I, I was told I would get a, a laptop, laptop and a cell phone, and when asked for a cell phone, they said, no, we're in budget crisis, so you can't have one, the city can't afford it, so I said, okay. And I use my, uh, my personal phone, but I do know that, um, department, I've, um, other council people around and, um, I don't think anybody, any other former folks, uh, had cell phones, but, um, I know that department heads and staff have cell phones, because I see it on the payroll warrants, so they, there, there is, somebody has, does have cell phones.
Right.
And I've, I've heard of, heard of them, I said, what's that for? Oh, this is for work, it's my work, this is my personal phone, this is my work phone. So I do know that there are others that, that, uh, within the City of Gardena, administrators and department heads and staff that do have cell phones, and I think if, um, someone wants and, wants, would like a cell phone, a city-issue cell phone, perhaps as an option, I don't know if everybody, all my colleagues will want one, but at least, um, perhaps it might be worthwhile to at least offer it as an option.
Okay, any other comments or questions on it?
I do.
So when I was a policeman, I had a, the city gave me a phone, and that's because I was on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And I also had my own personal one. Now, as a council person, I've been on council for five years. People do have my cell phone number. If I don't recognize the number, it goes to voicemail and they leave me a message. It's a message I, I know, and it's personal, I know, I call them back. Most people will call, uh, the city council office and leave messages, and the secretary forwards that message to me and, uh, pretty much gives me the information that was on the call and who called. And if it's, and it's juicy, I call people back. It's, I don't think I've ever not called anyone back. But forty-two hundred dollars, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, it may be that, I guess that's, everybody decides to have a cell phone, but everyone might not want a cell phone anyway, but, um, I just go, it's, it's enough for me to keep up with one, so.
Okay, well, give me one second, let me just let everybody go through it, and I'll, I'll come back to you. Councilmember Henderson?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I, I use an alternate number, and I use the, the mechanism of our council office and council secretary to email that, uh, except we're all in the community getting calls, I think for our role, uh, for folks to contact us, they'll contact us to follow up on an issue, not necessarily twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. If there's an emergency in the community, they should call emergency numbers or non-emergency number. Uh, I use an alternate number for folks to contact me, uh, via my cell phone, a Google number is another way to do it. So I don't have any issues, uh, with, with, uh, an additional device, but I won't take one, because I think you, you create another vector point for, uh, uh, freedom of information and different things like that, and you get confused about that. There was a, a training, I can't remember, the League or Independent Cities or Contract Cities, where we talked about the, the careful use of email and cell phones, so if we do that, we gotta have a real type policy on how it's used and what it's used for and when it's used, because you really need to make sure that you're handling city business and everything in regards to contacting, being contacted from, uh, the community. And if somebody's calling you at nine o'clock at night, I'm not sure what city business is happening, because we're discussing city business in a public forum. But we just need to be careful if we decide to go that route, but I personally won't accept a cell phone from the City of Gardena, that's, I'm fine without it.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Love?
Um, I'm gonna, uh, uh, agree with what Councilwoman Francis, uh, referenced, but, um, I understand that the city council has operated without an additional device. My life is a little different. Um, and I would love to hear from the city manager and the city attorney about the legalities of what could possibly happen. Um, uh, to, uh, Councilmember Henderson's point, that is exactly what I'm trying to avoid, I'm trying to be proactive instead of reactive. I do not want to get caught up in a situation of any kind where, um, I may have to turn over my devices, my personal devices, nor do I think, uh, we should be required to do all of these extra steps, we're talking about a small amount of money uh, per cell phone, forty-six hundred dollars is only if all the council members requested one. So if the other council members don't want a cell phone, that's fine. But it, you have to take into consideration the individual, uh, city council members', um, lifestyle. Mine's is very busy, and I have several things going on, so I would, it would benefit me to keep all of this separate. So I would love to hear from the city manager and the city attorney regarding this issue.
With regards to the legality, I don't need to step in, Mr. City Manager. Um, if there is a PRA where it's, uh, whatever the PRA request is, we always require, or we'll ask you if they're specifically asking for text messages or cell phone communications, if the request comes in for that, then we notify you, um, to check your devices. If there is, um, you know, it's up to you to then go through your device and turn that over. Or, you know, let us, inform us of what are those, uh, responsive messages that are on the cell phone, um, and forward them on to the city. Now, if there was, say there was a declaration that stated that you did not have any, um, and then there was evidence shown by the other side that, that you did in fact have, uh, a responsive communication on a cell phone, then irrespective of the cell phone, be it, you know, whatever the cell phone, whoever issued the cell phone, the court within order for that cell phone potentially, um, to have an in-camera, you know, review or discovery judge, take a look at it, and make that determination. So those are, um, at the end of the day, though, irrespective of what cell phone you have, you need to remember, um, you know, what the, what the law is. Um, and if you're conducting city business on any phone, the, the fact that it will, can be subject to the, uh, uh, Public Information Act or, under a PRA.
So what you're saying is, um, like, so in layman's terms, with if I get a text message or an email on my personal device, anyone can PRA that information, correct?
If it's responsible, if it's responsive to city business, like say someone makes a request and the request is, a request and the request is all communications of Councilmember Love pertaining to X project. It doesn't matter which, even if you have your own city cellphone, you have to still look at all your cellphones to provide any response, any, uh, communication responsive to that P R A.
Okay. So I got a text message this morning at seven thirty from a constituent, asking me questions at seven thirty. Why they text me at seven thirty is because that's my norm. But again, as a city council person, it's separate from cities, from the chamber. They're used to reaching me, um, on my personal cellphone through text message or phone calls or whatever, but I need to separate that now to prevent, um, any type of discovery or P R As for information that's on my private. My response to that, um, that, uh, constituent was send everything to my email. But for me, because I do have a lot going on in my life, which is my option, um, I don't always have time. It's easier for me to just answer a constituent's phone call than it is for me to go the return route. And so, uh, again, um, and I understand, but my concern is anything on my personal devices becomes discoverable uh, through a P R A and that's not what I want. So is there any, anything, any legal?
So ju- just because it's your personal cellphone, um, if it's city business, it's city, but if you're conducting city business, irrespective of what the device is, it's still subject to the P R A as an elected official.
Right. And that's what I don't want. Uh, it's easy for me to teach people or ask people or train people do not, and easy for me to not to respond, but, um, um, which is the reason why I'm asking for a city cellphone at this time, because I want to set this up the way it needs to go. So, uh, again, um, the other council members may not deal with what I deal with. So.
Here's a suggestion I have. I mean, each of us gets stipends for our job and I mean, if, for instance, Councilwoman Love, if you want to take fifty dollars from your stipend, buy a cellphone and just use it for city business only, I mean, I'm sure that's an option as well too. And you can deem it as, as a separate phone. I mean, that's why we have stipends that, whatever we need for city things, just, for instance, like we have stipend for our gas mileage as well. I mean, it's just a suggestion because I'm sure that once we, if we were to make a policy that says city council members have cellphones, regardless of whether or not we want it, that money's still set aside for us to get it, whether we use it or not. Is that correct?
So if you want, okay, just a couple of separate things. If you want to give yourselves a stipend to be able to purchase those that kind of want to elect to use it for a cellphone, the government code says that would, by, by IRS code, that's considered a salary. So the only way you guys can give yourselves an increase is to adopt an ordinance, but it cannot go into effect until the next election. You can't give yourselves a raise and have it go into effect immediately.
Oh, I wasn't speaking in terms of a raise. I, I wasn't speaking, that, that is another option as well. For instance, to ask for an increase so it will cover that, but that wasn't what I was asking. I'm saying right now with our current stipends, what we all get is a current stipend. Okay? Just take money from.
From the, what you guys currently get.
Currently receive right now.
That is a, that is an option. It's at your discretion what you guys, uh, use your money for.
Exactly. Whatever our, our monthly stipend is. That's one option because again, hypothetically, if we were to say, hey, you know, uh, a, a, a raise more because now we want, uh, a cellphone. If we were to vote on that today or the next council meeting, that doesn't go into effect until after the next election anyway. Correct?
Correct, correct. And so that would not resolve the issue of, you know, a, a future stipend would not, would not resolve the issue for the next two years.
So I'm not even talking about that. Just currently with the money we have right now, purchase a cellphone and you can call it your city phone and then that way you can utilize that one.
Okay. So my question with that is, like even you mentioned a reference, the thousand dollar iPad that we have. Uh, I finally got mine today and didn't realize until the latter part of the day that there was no wifi. So I need understanding as to why the city requires. We're twenty-four hours. The, the constituents can reach out to us, even though we would prefer them not to, but they have the ability and the opportunity to reach out to us whenever they choose to. Um, what is the reason why the city require us? Cause the stipend that you're talking about is not that great, you know, it's not that much, but why is it that the city council members are required to use our personal wifi, um, or cellphone or anything else to do and conduct city business? I think everything needs to be transparent and I don't think I'm asking for too much. Um, so now, when I'm out, now I'm asked to tether that thousand dollar iPad to my cellphone so that I can receive wifi and respond to emails. So, I mean, I think they're, uh, fifty dollars a month. And then you said buy a fifty dollar phone. Where are you going to get a fifty dollar phone from this, from that's, that's not even?
No, I was referring to what the monthly expense was. That's what I was referring to.
Okay. But before you even get to the monthly expense, you have to get to the phone. And so I, I just don't understand why the city would require council members to purchase and provide our own cellphones to conduct city business.
I don't know. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Cause we're not full-time council people.
We, we're, we're not full-time council, but we all know that we are, we work full-time hours. And, uh, just being available to our constituents is justification to, for me to have a cellphone. We have our department heads have cellphones, but our council members, uh, you know, when I checked around with the other cities, they either got a cellphone or a stipend. I don't want a stipend. I just want a simple cellphone.
Well, that's why I made the suggestion of you could use your stipend, for instance, to pay for your cellphone bill. I mean, yes, our constituents coming to us all, I mean, believe it or not, I have constituents showing up at my house unannounced, which is something that I'm not always happy about, but the fact is we're elected officials and try and explain to people that, you know what? Yes, I do live here. I, you know, um, I'm your mayor or council member or at whatever at the time, you know, or my position was or is. And, um, but I do conduct business at city hall. You can't just show up at the house. I understand you have a concern and I understand I'm the mayor twenty-four, seven, or if you, all of your council members, but I mean, still there, there's guidelines and there's boundaries. So just because a person texts you or calls you at that time, I mean, everybody, I think manages it, you know, in a way that either you can direct them to city hall if you want to talk to them personally or whatever. I mean, I, I mean, I run two businesses and I'm still here and I, and I think everybody here is busy in their own right. You know, whether you work one job, two jobs, or however, run an organization. So, I mean, I think it's just a matter of knowing how to just manage that or manage your phone, so, and, well, I don't know. So again, it's open for discussion at this point, so.
Uh, just, just, just quickly, so for, for the department people, it's just a part of the job, but for, because we're elected officials, we have to have a policy to do the cellphone. Is that how, how this works? I mean, so the department heads and all the other, uh, staff that have extra cellphones, they, I guess came out of their budget, but and because we're elected official has, it has, uh, has to be a policy. Am I, am I clear on that? I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious. I'm just, you know, just random thought.
I don't know.
It's a, it's, it's a policy decision whether or not you guys want to issue yourselves as a, issue elected officials a cellphone. If that's what it is, it's a policy decision. So you guys need to make a motion, get the votes for that policy directing us as staff to, to prepare a, a written policy that you guys want to do this.
Um, but is, is a policy for a department heads too? They didn't, I'm, I'm just curious, that's.
I, I don't know and I would have to ask, you know, the, the department of, uh, H R whether they get a stipend or whether they, um, whether the city provides them the phones. I, I don't know that information.
I, I was just, just curious about, you know, just.
Can, can I add something to, to this, this conversation, discussions that our, our roles are, are different than staff and, and, and personnel. So we gotta make sure we make that distinction. We're at the policy levels, that staff and department heads are responsible for the, 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 the operational, the tactical issues that are happening with the city. So they need to communicate real quick on a lot of different issues, especially in, in the case of an emergency. If there's a natural disaster and we need things to happen and all that, the constituents can call us and they call us now and everything, but the city manager needs to be able to call Allen Rigg immediately to get public works, to get some stuff moving right away. And then our jobs, we get fielded in later and we figure out what our communication's going to be to the community. If a constituent's calling you because there's a, a, a water main that busted, then that's actually wasting time because you can't do anything unlike them calling emergency services or something like that. So our roles are different. Where although we're twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, we're at the policy level and any city business we're conducting, city business is happening in a meeting like this. If a constituent, member of the community has a concern about something, want to follow up, then they can contact you and understand what you're saying, Councilwoman Love, in regards to kind of doing some separation of things, but you gotta kind of retrain everybody to look, this is a city office, uh, or send an email or something like that so they can understand that this is city business and this is your work, your other job phone or whatever, but if, if you feel you need a phone, then so be it.
And I appreciate that and I agree with that, but you just validated my point to a degree, um, because we are out in the community more than our department heads and our constituents see us more than they see them. A lot of times, my experience, they don't know who to call. So they'll call me to get direction. And it, and before that was fine, but at this point, um, I need to separate that. Um, I run two businesses, three nonprofits, I'm a mother and a grandmother. My duties and responsibilities are great and managing my time is of the utmost importance. Managing my life is even more important, which is why. Now, I understand that everybody may not want a cellphone and that's fine, but we need to have the option. Because conducting city business on any level, on anything personal should not be the case. Rather, like I said, I got an iPad, great, but what good is an iPad if I can't check my emails when I'm on the go? And now I'm asked to tether, tether that iPad to my personal cellphone. When I, when I, um, campaigned for this job, I did not know that it was going to cost me more money than I, I anticipated. I should not have to tether or, or do any city business on any personal devices or pay for anything to supplement what the city is asking me to do.
Okay. Um, any more questions or comments? Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public who should speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. So at this time, is there a motion to, um, for us to, to send to staff to prepare, uh, uh, some type of policy to, um, approve city council members', uh, use of a, or purchasing a cellphone? Is there a motion for that?
Madam Mayor, is the motion for just city council members or for all electeds?
All electeds. Cause if you do it for one, you have to do it for all. So at this time, is, um, there a motion for us to send direction to staff to prepare, um, an item, to come back to us for an actual action item, uh, for this?
Make the motion.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay. So Madam City Clerk, at this time, uh, the motion is send it to staff, um, to prepare an action item for our council members, all seven, all elected officials to have a cellphone. Um, motion's been made by Councilwoman Love and a second by Councilwoman Frances. Will you call the roll please?
Councilmember Love?
Yes. Uh, can I amend that motion? Because it's not, I, I want them to have the option. It's not, I don't want it to be mandatory. I want it to.
We do it for one, we would do it for everybody. I mean, just if you want to call. Understandably, if, 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 if you left the position tomorrow, the next person came in, they're going to sit here and say, well, why was, or I'm not even using you as an example. If, if, if I left the position tomorrow and somebody said, well, why did we only allow one council member to get it, not everybody? If it's going to be to something, it's got to be all the way across, either.
And I agree with that and, but, and I understand that, but what I'm saying is I would like for it to be an option, not mandatory, but an option. So if we can amend that, then the motion would be optional, available for our council members. Our council members coming in, current and coming in, may not want a cellphone.
Our iPads are available to us, but if we choose not to use it, we just don't. But the fact is it's there. So I think at the end of the day, it's, it's just a matter of phones or no phones.
To, uh, to, to kind of move, move this one, um, Madam Mayor, may I make a friendly amendment to, uh, her motion and, um, they'd given the option, looking at the policy of giving, offering council members an option of, um, a cellphone if, if they so choose.
Councilmembers or electeds? Just want to make sure I get clarification.
Elected, elected, elected. That's, that's.
A policy where, uh, the motion is for all, all electeds to have the option of a city issued cellphone. Is that correct on the motion?
Love will accept the amendment. Do you accept the amendment?
Yes.
All right. So that kind of moved, uh.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Councilmember Frances? Mayor Protem Tanaka?
No.
Uh, Councilmember Henderson?
No.
And Mayor Tasha?
No.
Serval?
No. Okay. Next item here is council directives. Does any member of the council have any directives at this time? Okay. Councilwoman Frances?
Okay. Um, Liz, is not enough, uh, Councilmember Henderson, at the last city council meeting, requested information about, uh, spectrum public ac- access for, uh, programming, for musical educational programming. And coincidentally, when he mentioned it, I just, you know, you won't believe it, but uh, one of my neighbors had just asked me a question, the same question. And then you brought, you made the motion that, uh, city council means, so it all worked out, but I was just wanting, can we get an update? Uh, Councilmember, you don't mind me asking for an update on this, do you? I mean, I'm not taking over your, your, uh, okay, thank you. So can we get an update on, on that? On, um, how, cause I know that, um, spectrum does allow public access, the cable programming, uh, to community that, that they serve. So I was wondering if we can get an update.
Councilmember Frances, uh, staff's still working on that. Um, I guess we don't need a, another director on that. I, I know that the staff is still working on it.
Okay. Thank you so much. You know, have any idea about how long it might take?
Uh, by the next meeting, uh, or before, uh, you should get a memo.
All right. That'd be great. And then the other one, uh, this is the second, uh, C U P we've approved for onsite sales of consumption of beer and wine. And I'm just wondering, do we have a tool in place to kind of keep track on how many, um, uh, these C U Ps were, were approved? I know we, we, we approved one, I think it was two. Uh, was it last council meeting or council meeting before? So I know there's, there's been three within the past, um, two or three months, cause I'm, I'm concerned about, um, uh, you're getting, getting kind of over a proliferation of, of beer and wine sales, uh, at different establishments and I don't want it to kind of get out of hand. So is there any way that we can monitor, uh, come up with a, a way of monitoring the sales or how it's all, so we don't end up this? Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
Do you want, um, a list of all the, um, alcohol licenses that A B C has issued in the City of Gardena?
Well, I don't, uh, see, I'm not quite sure. I just, just want some mechanism to, to keep track of, of, um, the ones that we're approving. Cause I don't want, and, 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 you know, parts where they're being approved. That's all. Cause I just want to make sure that we don't end up with, um, one particular neighborhood being saturated with beer and wine licenses and you understand that, I think it, it can become problematic.
Uh, so, um, I guess it's, if you have the entire list and you can see where they're all located, um, if you want, uh, a list of the ones that you approved, if you, I mean, the motion can be from X period of day. I mean, are you, um, from, from what point forward would you want the list?
Yeah. Cause I'm.
I'm just trying to assist you with, you know, getting, 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 um, you to state your, the directive that would suffice, that would suffice your, your, your needs.
Yeah. Cause I know, I was on planet, that we approved the liquor store, um, right down the corner of, um, but that was, that was many years ago. So I don't know if it's long, it's maybe within the past six months or within the past year, maybe that kind of put a time limit on it.
So a motion, uh, your directive is for city staff to prepare, uh, provide a memo of all the C U Ps for alcohol licenses, for businesses with alcohol licenses in the last year?
Yeah, maybe just because, see, we, we've proved quite a few across the years, but maybe just in, for last year to kind of get a handle on, uh, where we're headed, what road we're heading down with this. Uh, if we need to put some safeguards in before we get there. You know, before we get to a point like, wow, it's too, too many places that are selling beer on our city. So I just.
I, I understand, um, the goal. I just want to make sure that staff has a clear, um, understanding of uh, the timeframe that you want to see.
Well, maybe take a look in, within the past year, that, that might be.
Um, so from January 1st, 2022? Or you want to go back from like July 1st, 2021?
Let's, let's take a look at July 1st, 2021 and then move forward to now.
Okay.
That might give us a better idea.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Madam Mayor, I have one directive.
Go ahead.
If I can get a second. If we could have Madam City Attorney, uh, give us a briefing on the HCD lawsuit that's, uh, circulating through the state of California in regards to this whole Rena uh, discussion and everything, so we can be better informed and figure out, uh, what the city of Gardena, uh, would like to do or plans to do moving forward in regards to HCD and Rena.
Yeah, I'd definitely second that.
I, I will proceed to agendize it then for closed session.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more directives? I have one directors, um, one directive. I'd like to see, um, if, um, this, I'd like to see if we could bring before the council, um, an option of, um, when we have developers come in as far as having, I'm not that we're mandating this, but have it where we have a goal of what we'd like to see them as far as, uh, a percentage we'd like to see as far as local hire. And, um, so that this is something that they could see that this is, we're, we're in the process of approving their project. This is what we would like to see. Um, so if staff could maybe bring some information back, um, doesn't have to be the next council meeting. We can put this out maybe, um, a month or so from now. Um, but just, uh, something where we put a goal together as far as a local hire, what we would recommend to these new developers as they're coming in.
Madam Mayor, may I, if I may, if there is a second on this, um, if I may, I know that, um, G Back has asked for a presentation at their next, uh, G Back meeting. And I'd like to hear the feedback from G Back as we discuss this item before we actually bring it back to the mayor. Their meeting is going to be in September where I'll be making a presentation to them. So if it's okay with the mayor, um, if you get a second on this directive, if we can bring this back. Councilmember Francis, you'll second?
Yeah, I was going to say if-
Can I, can then, is it okay if we take it to G Back first, get feedback? Cause I would like to hear their thoughts from that commission before we bring, um, any potential, uh, recommendations to the council.
And, and that's why I wanted to wait some time because I did want to talk with them about it as well, but I, I want to make sure that we as a council just kind of start thinking in terms of that mindset. Um, but yeah, definitely want to get feedback from G Back on, on this. Um, and, um, so yeah, if we put it out, are they, I believe, they don't have a meeting in August?
They, they don't have a meeting in August. They're, uh, scheduled for a meeting in September. So, um, if it's okay with the mayor, uh, and Councilwoman Francis, uh, for us to bring this back after we go to G Back, so it'll probably be late Septem-, yeah, October.
That's, that's fine. I, I'm okay with that. If I get a, somebody's second.
Is that okay with you, Francis?
If you mean that the city would have, has a local, most, most cities have a local hire preference. And it's, it's not against the law.
We, we, we have a local, uh, higher preference, um, in our code already. Um, and we also, um, allot, uh, a certain percentage allowed by code of 5% with regards to, uh, local purchasing done by the city. Um, you know, so we, we will take that information. I mean, there's goals that are not mandated that we can have or, um, things that we can tell developers. We would like to see, just understand that we can't mandate them.
Right. And that's what I want to talk about, goals.
Cause Councilwoman Henderson has asked for that before as well. I don't know. Haven't you, uh?
Yeah, but I wanted a mandate and I was told we can't mandate.
I can't give you a mandate. Sorry. They won't let me do that.
We can encourage preferences.
But we can, uh, yes, we can encourage that. That's something we can, we can always discuss and mention. And remember what, uh, Assistant City Attorney Krannitz, uh, mentioned here early. On those projects where you do have discretion, you have a lot more say there.
Right.
So keep that always in mind when you're dealing with discretionary projects. Okay? I think they're pretty good.
Okay. Are there any more directors at this time?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I would like for the city to, um, uh, come back with findings regarding, uh, what it would take to identify locations and costs for dog parks.
They're already working on that. That was something I put in place about three years ago.
So three years ago, and we haven't gotten any movement is, can we get an update then? Um, because the residents are looking for dog parks and I'm told that, yeah, we're looking into it, but three years ago, that's quite a while. So can we get an update then?
They can probably update us, but they have been working on that. So assume that we just get an update. Can we get an update on where the staff is at with that? If there's a sec-, is there a second on this?
I'll second. I'm not sure where we put it, but I'll second because I want that too.
Well, um, I took the time to go and visit some of our parks and, uh, there was a couple of locations that I did identify. And I have even checked with a couple of department heads and, uh, they were okay with it. So I don't think, uh, allocating some space for our dogs, uh, since everybody got one during COVID. But thank you for the second.
Okay. Are there any other directors at this time?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, there has to be a way and, uh, City Attorney, uh, Vasquez or a city manager, uh, can help, uh, me with this, um, directive, but, um, agenda forecast packets. Uh, is there a way that we can get, um, this information in advance, maybe on Fridays? Um, because to receive a agenda packet like this on a Friday and we have to go to review on a Tuesday, doesn't give us much time to accurately review the items on the agenda. So, um, I was told that there used to be a agenda forecast done before. Is it, uh, possible to bring that back?
Legally, there's no issues with, uh, staff providing you a copy of the agenda forecast. Um, would you want it on, on a specific day of the week? Uh, I mean, is it? You, you mentioned Friday, so I wasn't sure if you meant like the same Friday when we published the agenda or the Friday before we published the agenda? Like when ideally, would you like to see the agenda forecast?
Um, if we can get it the Friday before and then the Friday of, that's fine, but, um, to, yeah, get these agenda, uh, packets and they're, um, eight hundred thousand plus pages, uh, and we only have three or four days to review over a weekend is not sufficient information for us to do our jobs adequately.
Okay. So the directive is for, uh, staff, it would be the city clerk's office to provide with the, uh, an agenda forecast on every Friday. Um, and Councilmember Love, I just want to make sure you understand what the agenda forecast contains. It's just the title of the item.
No information regarding the item?
It does not. It only contains the title of the item. That's what the agenda forecast document is.
Okay. So then what would it be if we were looking to see what, uh, some of the items that's going to be on the agenda? Cause I mean, looking at this agenda tonight, uh, there's no way that I can believe that all of these items was added at the last minute. So at some point, the, the staff knew that these items was going to hit the agenda. So maybe you can advise me, when would be a timely manner or fashion for us to, um, receive this information so we can have time to go over it? Because just on this agenda item, the, the, the Masukai Park plans were 69 pages and then you had the housing elements that, and so some of these items can be very in-depth.
I'll have the city clerk's office chime in on this because I know it varies, um, by department. Um, and they have a better idea since they put the agenda together as to when they're actually receiving the documents.
Well, Councilwoman Love, we used to get, um, I, I, I haven't looked at it in a long time, but it was like a spreadsheet. And it just had different items that were coming up and when, you know, what month they might come up in. And so you, you could kind of study ahead. I don't know.
That's the agenda forecast document, Councilwoman Francis.
But that's, is that already in place or we don't have that anymore?
We, we still have that if the council would, uh, you know, we had, get a directive for a second and that's, that's a document that can be provided to you again.
Okay. But it's just a spreadsheet with, um, say, the, um, the housing community developments coming up in October, October or something like that.
Right. Things, items that we forecast are, are going to be put on the agenda, um, and when as we're forecasting them, um, that's what goes onto the document.
Now, when we receive that, will we have the ability to request additional information?
You could, you, I, I mean, you could always reach the city manager and, and starting, you know, if you have any inquiries about items that you see on the forecast. Um, but I, and I understand, you know, uh, you wanting more time to have the physical documents. Um, like I said, I, I know that the leave of city clerk's office doesn't put the documents. I don't know when they're being received, but the putting together of the packet doesn't happen until Friday.
Hmm. Okay. So you can, we can go back to doing the spreadsheet.
There is no issue, I mean legally, from my standpoint, there is no issue from, uh, ca-, uh, council members having, uh, being able to be provided with the agenda forecast. If that's the directive.
Now, it used to, well, it's, it used to be right on the agenda, on the agenda packet, then right up under it, agendas, there would be a little forecast or something. So I don't know what I don't have.
Madam, Madam City Clerk, do you, uh, how far back was this, Councilwoman Francis?
Oh, I haven't seen it. It's, it's been a while since I've seen it.
But, but it has been since you've been on council.
Yeah, yeah.
Ma-, Madam City Clerk, um, can we ask the deputy city clerk to comment about?
Please, thank you.
The item that, um, the description that Councilwoman Francis is providing.
I will. Wanted to comment now or?
Yeah, just-
There you go.
Becca. So I do prepare a forecast projection calendar that gets presented to the department heads on Wednesday mornings at our meeting. And, um, in answer to your question about agenda items, departments have uh, a deadline up until, um, Thursday, and sometimes it is on Friday that we are still getting items. So, um, the project, forecast projection calendar would only have titles. No other information is provided and it is a spreadsheet. Councilmember Francis, I'm not sure what you're talking about, what you've received in the past.
It wasn't directed-
Your packet?
No, it was just, um, on, on my, uh, city, city computer, the, the city issued computer laptop. It, you, you have agenda and then right behind it, it have like a forecast.
That's the forecast projection calendar. Yeah, we put it in the same folder so it's accessible.
Yeah.
There would be a, a link, Becky, that they have access to on their iPads? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
It goes through our SharePoint. So there's a, a couple of ways they can access the agenda packet. One of the ways is through SharePoint and it's agenda items. They all have it on their computers. Um, and the forecast projection calendar is always in that folder. So they actually already have access to it.
So in the, it would be a matter of, um, you, uh, teaching Councilwoman Love how to access it. I mean, I, I don't have a city, um, iPad, so I wouldn't be the one to be able to do this or having IT just showing her where, uh, to be, that she, and they have continuous access to this, correct?
They do.
Hmm.
It gets updated, uh, after the department head meeting. And then if I know of any other items that are being projected, I go ahead and revise it. There's not any set time that it gets revised. It just happens as I hear of the items coming in.
And Councilwoman Love, I will say also, we have recently started emailing you the day after the planning commission. Um, emailing you the planning commission quality action sheet and also has the link to all of the documents um, that are, that were attached to that, which is, are the same documents that you're going to get in your packet when it goes to council. So when it comes to the planning documents at least, that would give you an additional week. Um, you know, since you would get that on the Thurs-, the Thursday, excuse me, the Wednesday after the planning commission meeting. I, I hope that would also help.
Okay.
Are there any more directors? Okay. All right. So moving on to our city manager remarks regarding our previous directors and council items.
Mayor Sirda, members of the city council, uh, I only have one memo that, uh, I sent out this week. Uh, that is the housing projects update, uh, that was dated July 21st, 2022. Um, that ends my report. I do want to, uh, read a few people a very happy birthday, Mayor Sirda. Uh, Council, uh, Mayor Protem Francis and our recreation director, Stephanie Santos. Happy birthday.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. So next we're going to move on to council remarks. We're going to begin tonight with Councilmember Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Since our last meeting, uh, I had a great meeting with the city manager and we went over our broadband project. So that will be moving forward. Uh, we worked, uh, with the tool from the California Public Utilities Commission that allows the community to determine the, uh, broadband connectivity within their community. So we can save $24,000 and not send out a survey because they actually have, uh, uh, some live data, real-time data in regards to what our connectivity is in our community. Our community is pretty connected. I was actually really surprised at how connected we are. Now, the speeds vary uh, depending upon what part of the city you're in and what, what plan you may have with your provider, but we can work on that. We discussed, uh, the environmental justice element, but I'm going to now retool that. Mr. City Manager, since we got these competing interests, but we did agree that we need to have a, a metric measurement tool and we need to make sure that that gets posted on an intranet site so we can all track it as well as publish it to the internet site so the community can track it. And we can see what our progress is as we move forward through time. I also attended the Ice Cream with a Cop at Raleigh Park. That was actually a very good event. Uh, one suggestion I have, if we, we do that again and we call LA County Fire, if they got some old dirty waters, just let it out on our grass and we'll take that and everything versus running it out in the street. But we did do a storm drain test, so that was perfect. Um, again, welcome, Councilwoman Love and Madam Mayor. So ends my report.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Councilmember Fran-, uh, Francis.
Okay. Uh, since the last meeting, I attended our weekly, uh, cert response team check-in. We have, uh, checking our little walkie-talkies and we do that every week just in case of, uh, so we would, we can be prepared in case of emergency. Also attended the California Food Administration, um, demonstration on meth release program. Now, it's not exactly what you think, uh, what they were, this is whole process where they, um, grow, um, sterilized meth flies and then they mate them with, uh, wild female meth flies. And one interesting thing about this is that, you know, they found that the female, wild female meth flies weren't necessarily attracted to the lab-grown male sterilized fries. So what they, flies, so what they did was they, um, kind of painted them with ginger root oil. And the females became more, so it made the, the lab meth flies more competitive in terms of mating. It's a very interesting process. You know, that's my science part kicking in. And then, uh, they load them up on a, uh, twin-engine propeller airplane and they release them in different parts of the sea. I couldn't find out exactly where, but, uh, yeah, so it's very interesting. And I also attended Hawthorne Airpoint Noise Committee, uh, meeting. And we have, um, a designated person, Kathy Till, who attends every meeting for us to make sure the city of Gardena is represented in that. And I heard a good presentation on electric airplanes. So here we go. And, uh, last, uh, but not least, uh, my condolences to the Wallen family. Uh, my sincere sympathy to our, our staff, uh, City Attorney Vasquez and Attorney, um, Lisa Krannitz, uh, the loss of Mr. Wallen. And I just want to encourage everybody to keep doing what you're doing, to keep your family safe. Uh, please do your due diligence. We have not do this COVID thing yet, but we are going to get through it. And just know that better days are coming. That's a promise. Thank you.
Uh, next up is, uh, Councilmember, um, Mayor Protem Tanaka.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, since our last, uh, I attended the Parks and Recreation Human Services Day. Uh, that was a fun day. Uh, thanks Stephanie and her crew for always putting on a good event. Um, I attended the, uh, it was kind of a celebration, uh, for the, uh, innovation, uh, homeless services. Uh, they gave out an award for, uh, one of their retiring, um, members. Um, it was kind of a nice little brewery, uh, in Hawthorne, on, on Rose Grant. So it was a pretty nice place. Uh, I attended Ice Cream with a Cop at both Raleigh and Arthur Johnson Park. Um, the only other thing about that watermark was, uh, the poor officer that got dumped, it was pretty dirty. So maybe next year it'll be better. Uh, attended the RCC, uh, users meeting. Um, I was nominated and elected as the chairman of the board uh, for the South Bay Cities, uh, to that meeting. Uh, attended the COG, uh, legislative briefing. Um, uh, there weren't too many, uh, actual, uh, politicians there. Most of them were their, uh, their field reps. Um, but there was some, there was some interesting stuff that was, uh, brought up, so. Um, but there was some, there was some interesting stuff that was brought up, so um, stay tuned for more on that. Uh, and lastly, um, as Councilwoman Francis just said, um, I was very sad to hear today, uh, that my good friend um, and colleague Peter Wallen passed away. Um, I, I've known him forever. Um, just a great, gentle, wonderful guy. Uh, we had a great time in Japan and so that's something that uh, I'll always have dear to me. Uh, and we played golf and kind of did cigars uh, at the foundation tournament. So I was glad I got to spend some time with them uh, just uh, a few weeks ago. Uh, but to the Wallen family, um, and to our uh, attorney staff at the city, um, we're, we'll keep everybody in purse, but thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Okay, um, thank you. And for myself, since the last council meeting, I too attended the Parks, Recs and Human Services um, Day that they had. And uh, once again, want to thank uh, uh, the Director Stephanie Santin, you did an amazing job, seemed like every year you take it up another level. Usually those kind of events, we just have like cake and punch in the hallway, but to have the jumper and all the different games with the, you know, not only the kids, but the employees to come out, take a quick little break was really, was really nice and different, so thank you again for, for putting that whole thing together. Um, I also attended the Boys and Girls Club um, Summer Camp Program at One Fifty-Sixth Street School. That's where I had the opportunity to meet our Pledge, uh, Mr. Connor Church. And, and like I said, he was so impressive that day that I asked him on the spot, I'm like, you have to come and do our Pledge of Allegiance, such a very nice, well-mannered young man, so happy I was able to uh, just see the Boys and Girls Club, um, their uh, their um, um, their program in, in use there and how well it was done. Uh, learned a lot of good information and how we can maybe implement them and some other things that we as a city uh, would like to do as well, and I'll share that with you at a later time, I know, because the hour is late. Um, and then um, I also attended the uh, Ice Cream with the Cop, uh, fun event and uh, uh, I think everybody had a great time. And in, in the, in the defense of the fire department, because I got this firsthand, I did mention how the water was a little muddy and I was told that a lot of times when water has sat in the tank um, on the truck for a while, it gets, the sediment, sediment gets kind of mixed in there with it, so when it's shot out, it may, it looks like that and what you're looking at is some of the sediment from the tank that the water sits in, so that's why it looked like that. Um, so in their defense, but uh, I felt uh, kind of sorry for the officer who was getting dunked in it, so.
We thought we lost them a couple of times, couldn't find them.
Oh well, yeah, oh well, but yeah, that was what I was um, officially told. But uh, again, a great event that they put on, I know the community enjoyed it. And um, you know, I know the police department, they do, I think it was over three hundred events a year um, between their um, you know, Coffee with a Cop and all their different events they have throughout the summer. And COVID may have slowed it down, but it didn't stop it, so I just, you know, appreciate all that they do as far as uh, enhancing their community policing. And you know, I've heard comments made before about, oh, you know, the community is afraid of the cops. Well, all I see is kids and adults high-fiving the officers, hugging them, saying, hey, when I grow up, I want to be like you, so um, I think what they're doing is an awesome job. Um, I also attended my monthly meetings with the CCGA as well as the uh, sanitation meeting. And then on last Friday, um, I was uh, asked to participate in the uh, Sarah High School Golf Tournament. I had a team in there, unfortunately I was sick all last week, my team played for me. Um, well, it would have been four of us anyway, but I wasn't able to play. But I was happy that uh, we were able to uh, represent the City of Gardena in the Sarah High School um, Golf Tournament at Chester Washington. And then lastly, um, I too would like to just give my condolences to the Wallen family. Um, you know, I, I'm still in shock, I can't believe it, Peter was an awesome and amazing um, attorney for our city. Um, he, oh gosh, he brought so much good information here, um, like Councilmember or Mayor Protem Tanaka mentioned. Um, you know, we had a wonderful time in Japan and I know just, the flight alone was twelve hours and I think Peter and I talked for twelve hours flying back and we just, just had a really nice time, um, and uh, got to know Peter even more and uh, um, learning about him going to law school and, and, and all of that, so um, he definitely will be missed and um, you know, again, condolences to his family and uh, um, you know, he did an amazing job here in our city and uh, Gardena is a better place because of him, so. With that, um, that ends my re- uh, report, uh, next up is Councilmember Love.
I too attended the um, Ice Cream Social Cop, um, Dunk a Cop, uh, both parks, uh, at Raleigh Park and South Park. Um, I want to thank Connecta for providing all of the ice cream that um, the guests enjoyed. I attended um, one of our newest businesses in the city, Saw Brand Opening, which is simply salad. And uh, that pretty much is my report, I look forward to attending additional events in the future.
Okay, um, that being said, um, announcements, I have a couple of upcoming events here. Um, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. City Manager, was there a video of the announcements or no?
No, Madam Mayor, there isn't, we do have a video after your.
Right, I got that one, okay. So a couple of quick things here, um, on this coming Friday, July twenty-ninth, we have um, Smores and Moore's Family Fun Night. Um, it'll be this Friday, uh, July twenty-ninth from six-thirty to eight-thirty. At City Hall, it's games, activities, um, free family fun and the emphasis is on, is on smores and treats. Uh, we also have um, our Summer Block Party, which is going to be uh, in celebration of National Night Out. It will be Tuesday, August second, um, from six-thirty to eight-thirty, we'll be here at City Hall uh, where we've had it the last couple of years, uh, right here, we'll close off the street. Um, they're saying stop by, meet your Gardena Police Department, um, officers, city staff and your neighbors, so once again, August second, uh, six-thirty to eight-thirty, right here at City Hall parking lot. And also the City of Gardena has Adult Coed Softball, which will be Friday nights, Masfukai Park, Raleigh Park. Um, it's gonna, the season is going to begin on Friday, August the fifth. Um, if you'd like more information, you can call City Hall at three one zero two one seven, nine five three seven, or go to our social media sites, on Instagram, Facebook, as well as um, our city uh, website here. And it gives information as far as um, what it costs to get a new team, uh, returning team, umpire fees, et cetera. And let's see, a couple more announcements, uh, City of Gardena is hosting a Summer UCLA Blood Drive, which will be Thursday, August the eleventh, from nine to two, nine AM to two PM. Um, that's at Rush Gym, which is located at sixteen fifty-one West One Sixty-Second Street. And uh, just so you know, for, uh, in September, we have our annual um, Keep Gardena Beautiful Day coming up, our Community Cleanup Day. That'll be Saturday, September seventeen, uh, from eight AM to noon. If you'd like more information on that, you can go to our City of Gardena uh, website or social media pages. Uh, especially if you'd like to get your entire organization um, involved, uh, there is a registration process, you can do that online. And then the last announcement here, um, this here is for um, October here, we have our Fur Baby Love Fest. This is the second annual year we're going to be doing this, um, it'll be September, October first, I'm sorry, Saturday, Saturday, October first, from one to six PM and it will be here on the Gardena City Hall lawn. And uh, again, that too, we'll have more information um, on our City of Gardena website as well as our social media sites. All this information, um, the flyers and so on will be provided um, on those uh, social media sites. So with that, um, I'm going to move on to our remembrances. Tonight, we're going to adjourn in memory of Mr. Broderick May Senior, who was sixty-five years of age. Mr. May lived in Gardena for more than twenty-five years and worked several jobs in Gardena before working for the State of California. He also played alto sax in the Gardena Marching Band. He has two sons and two uh, daughters and had recently retired in twenty-twenty. We're also going to be adjourning in memory of uh, Peter L. Wayland, who was eighty-one years of age, a beloved city attorney for the City of Gardena who provided over twenty years of service. Peter received his bachelor degree from the University of California, Berkeley in nineteen sixty-two and attended Bolt School of Law, uh, with the practice emphasized, emphasis on municipal and real estate law. Peter was a um, partner at Wayland, Crest, uh, Bresman and Krannitz LLP and re, and had recently retired as a City Attorney from the City of Gardena in twenty-twenty. Peter decided to take a step back to enjoy life and a few extra rounds of golf. He was still very much involved, um, as he became the Deputy City Attorney for the City of Gardena through the Jones and Mayor, Mayor uh, Law Firm. Peter provided a great wealth of knowledge to the city staff and he will alw, and he would always greet you with a warm smile, he will be greatly missed. So at this time, I believe we have a um, a adjournment video as well, if staff can play that at uh, at this time. Okay, thank you to the staff for, for putting that together, that was, that was very nice, very nice. Um, so at this time, we're going to move on to the adjournment. The Gardena City Council adjourned to the closed session portion of the City Council meeting at seven PM followed by the regular City Council meeting at seven thirty PM on Tuesday, August ninth, twenty-twenty-two. So we are adjourned at this time, thank you.
Good night all, good midding, sleep fast.
Good night.
Good night, Joe.